Good evening. I'm Carolyn Rye, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this 25th day of May 2021. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act is amended by the Virginia General Assembly and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach will be conducted in this this meet formal meeting, excuse me, will be conducted in person for School Board members and certain staff members. However, due to the necessary health mitigations in place, it's impractical and unfeasible for the public to attend this meeting in person. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. Madam Clerk, would you please take the verbal role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in School Board chambers is Chairwoman Rye, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems. And attending within the school administration building is Ms. Holt by Zoom due to health reasons.
Thank you. I ask everyone present now to join me in a moment of silence. And please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, the recognition portion of our program. I'll turn over to Vice Chair Melnick, Mrs. Melnick.
Tonight, we as a board have the pleasure of recognizing one specific staff member who has been awarded an incredible honor. This staff member has been named our Virginia Beach City Public Schools 2022 Citywide Teacher of the Year. As a board, we are proud to recognize Kimberly C. Nurse, an advancement via individual determination, also known as avid coordinator and teacher at Kempsville High School as the Division's 2022 Citywide Teacher of the Year. Ms. Nurse attended Norfolk State University, where she earned her bachelor's degree in history pre-law and her master's degree in special education. She has served 15 years as a special education teacher for VB schools. She worked at Sea-Tac Elementary School and Lanstown High School before coming to Kempsville High School in 2018, where she recently accepted a new position as an avid coordinator and teacher. Additionally, she has served as Student Council Association Advisor, class sponsor, cooperating teacher, avid mentor, Partners in Education Liaison Administrator Intern, and a Principal's Advisory Committee Member. In 2019, she was instrumental in planning, coordinating, and overseeing the African-American Male Summit at Kempsville High School. And she has also helped students found the city's first Black student union at Kempsville. Ms. Nurse was selected as the 2022 VBCPS Citywide Teacher of the Year from an initial pool of 87 Teachers of the Year, which was then narrowed down to five finalists for Citywide Teacher of the Year. The other finalists are Barbara Bezel, a chemistry teacher at First Colonial High School; John Pinkowski, a science teacher at Brandon Middle School; Heather Riggs, an English as a Second Language teacher at the Adult Learning Center; and Lori Yates, a landscape and turf management instructor at the Technical and Career Education Center. Ms. Nurse will be honored officially on November 2 during the annual Teacher of the Year Dinner hosted by the Virginia Beach Education Foundation. At this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand as you are able and share in a round of applause as we congratulate our 2022 Virginia Beach City Public Schools Citywide Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kimberly Nurse.
Madam Chair, that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you. Okay, that leads us to the agenda adoption portion of the meeting. Are there modifications to the agenda? Mrs. Hughes.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we add the resolution for the resolution regarding mask and face coverings not being required for outdoor activities.
Does is this resolution available for everybody to view? And we'll allow you to start with.
Mr. Linetti, Ms. Linetti is passing it out, but also it was emailed about a week and a half ago.
So without getting into a full discussion at this very moment, can you elaborate on what lingering matter still remains with regard to masks that you would that that you are bringing this up for consideration?
Is that a requirement of bringing forth a resolution? I would actually like to hear you articulate why you wouldn't put it on the agenda to start with. Because if you're doing it for good cause, I think you should let the public know why what that good cause was.
The mask requirements that were in place had been announced, and the first one had to do with right, the PE and recess mask requirement had been relaxed at that point, had been eliminated essentially. And and the second matter of graduation mask use was at that time in compliance with the governor order on large outdoor gatherings. And so now we got an email today that senior families were the email today is sharing that that, based on the governor order for Friday, will be relaxed. So now the graduation mask issue is in effect settled and and to accommodate what it essentially was.
That wouldn't be part of articulating why you declined to put it on the agenda a week ago if that came out afterwards.
I'll just restate that the first matter was again, what was the first matter? Help me out, somebody.
This is simply to allow masks to be optional anytime staff and students are outside. We receive emails that, you know, certain athletics, they are allowed to relax their mask, but marching band isn't. This was simply to be uniform, that outside staff and students, and at graduations, staff, students, and their guests, masks are optional. It was additionally asking that those who are in favor of masks don't shame people who don't wear them, and people who don't like masks don't shame people who do, which would also seem in compliance with us being a no bullying zone because people seem to have very strong feelings about these.
So this is a vote to get it on the agenda for discussion. Mrs. Manning.
Yeah, and this goes back to our bylaw change, where we used to have a rotating member of the School Board do agenda planning. And it was trusted to the Chair and the Vice Chair that they would allow items on the on the agenda unless it posed a burden, a time burden, or an extra burden on the staff, which neither of these do. So I'm just very disappointed that the Chair and the Vice Chair are not allowing just considerations. If you don't agree with something, that's fine. But you need to allow items to to get on the agenda even if you don't agree with them and allow the public an opportunity. We've been getting tons and tons of emails on this topic, and the board has never had this conversation. And so I'm just very disappointed that board members are asking for agenda items to be on the agenda, and you're unilaterally not allowing it.
I can only convey again that the two matters, one wasn't concerned. One was a division relaxation based on a reanalysis of PE and recess mask use. And the second graduation was up until this week, based on the present governor order. So and that and the administration had at that point stated their position. But I will again put this up for a vote for the collective board on on adding this as an agenda item for if there needs to be a further to have the discussion at the right time and place.
Madam Chair, I have another motion. I don't know if you want to vote on this one first before I make mine. It's your own.
Maybe for simplicity, we will.
Yeah, for simplicity, yeah. Okay, that's fine.
So all in favor of a vote to add this resolution for discussion under what is your request under action? Under action, show a raised hand.
Ms. Felton. Ms. Holt, how do you vote?
I'm voting not to put it on the agenda. I'm not sure how the question was stated.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes and one no.
All right, so that would be action item.
I'm sorry, Jessica, how do you vote?
Sorry, I'm gonna I'm gonna vote no for having it on action. Would have been open to having it on information for discussion, but I don't feel comfortable with adding something to take action on without giving the public the proper opportunity to come and speak on it.
Okay, so.
I would be amenable to moving it to information.
Do we need another vote, Mrs. Linetti? Okay, so a motion and a second, Mrs. Riggs, to add this to information, which would be item 13F, if I'm reading correctly. Somebody can correct me on that.
It would be item number 13F.
Okay, so all in favor, raise hand, please.
Ms. Holt, how do you vote putting Ms. Hughes' resolution under information?
No.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a 10 in favor of, including all members in the School Board chamber, and one no in Ms. Holt's.
Thank you all. Okay, Mrs. Weems.
Yes, I would also like to move to make a motion to amend the agenda in order to add the resolution to clarify equity training and teaching to the information section tonight, labeled 13G, and thus followed by an action item in two weeks.
Okay. All all in favor?
Do you want any discussion?
I don't. Is there anybody who wants to share or ask? Okay, please.
Yeah, I am also very disappointed, and I don't understand the message that was left on my answering machine last late Wednesday night, saying that this would not be added because basically we add an agenda to the item so that folks can see it on Wednesday or Thursday before our meeting, and they can say, oh, there's something on the agenda that I'm interested in. I want to go speak. Or, oh, there's something on the agenda I'm interested in. I want to actually listen to it next Tuesday night. By not putting these on the agenda, I submit it to you May 11, 14 days ago, plenty enough time, and the public, we have completely left the public out of this important step of this process because nobody knows we're discussing it tonight. I mean, yeah, a few out in the parking lot that just happen to be, you know, know it. But the general public, the general parent that has so many questions about this has no idea that we're discussing it tonight, and that is a shame, and that was wrong.
And I'll just convey the rationale of a resolution of this nature and thinking of the broader, the complete public is composed of many elements, and it struck us as a resolution that would rather than add, it would just sow so confusion and anxiety, and I didn't think it was the responsible thing to do. But we were assured, we you were assured of still getting it added tonight so that it could be considered for the public's purposes. There will be the context of a discussion.
Well, yes, but Ms. Rye, that's so confusing because it it's not your call to decide if the public's going to be confused. It's your call to administer bylaws and to be an administrator of this board. And so it was going to cause so much confusion last week. But this week, by not doing it the proper way, you have caused utmost confusion. You've caused the public to think that we're not transparent, and you've caused the public, you have withheld the ability for them to see what was going to be discussed tonight.
So we have each stated our case, yes.
No, that's okay. I'll wait, but.
All right, so all in favor of adding this as Agenda Item 13G? Raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have another amendment to the agenda, please.
Yes.
I would like to move that any speakers that signed up on these two topics that we just added to the agenda, any speakers that signed up on to speak on these topics who are under non-agenda items, that if they're here, and you know, I know that staff is checking them in out front, that if they're if they're here, that they be moved to the hearing on Agenda Item speakers. And if they're not here, that we continue to televise and make public and record the non-agenda speakers this evening since there are going to be people who are speaking on these topics that were not afforded the advance notice to know that it was going to be on the agenda and that we make it fair and allow everyone to be recorded this evening.
So Madam Clerk, was there outreach?
We need a second for my motion.
Oh, second. I'm sorry, Mrs. Hughes. Have we have we reached out to any of these speakers up to this point?
We have not reached out to the speakers up to this point.
They're out there waiting for an answer.
Mrs. Anderson.
So to be able to accommodate those speakers, it would be it would be a change to our bylaws, which would require a 2/3 vote. Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's good.
Ms. Linetti, wouldn't this be a bylaw change since these people did not sign up? I'm sorry, I'm just.
I'm sorry. It's well, it's now on your formal agenda. Your bylaws and your rules of speakers don't say what you signed up for. It's what they can speak on formal, and now you call it informal agenda and non-agenda item speakers. And when you move it to formal, they're entitled to speak on the formal section of it. So they're they now are in that place. If they're not here, we may have to accommodate them in another way. But it's now on your formal agenda so they can speak.
Okay, so they if they're not here, they could be accommodated through Zoom or whatever, right?
Yes, I think you're going to have to allow something for them afterwards if they don't know to be here to speak. If they're out there waiting, and they know that some of the topics that were just added to the agenda, then they should be allowed to come in now and speak.
Okay.
So it's my personal recommendation to, I would advocate a yes vote for tonight and that we when we have this speaker discuss broader speaker discussion at the retreat, we'll just add this as one of the the variables to just if it needs further codification so we can be consistent in the future. All right, so we have the motion and the second. So if by show of raised hands, if approved, then I guess it's staff who will offer this option to these speakers. So please show a raised hand if you approve.
Well, can I clarify that real quick? I think we're going to need to go into recess if if that's the case because we're going to need some time to sort through who's here to speak on what, reach out to each of the individuals on the list, make sure they're aware of when they're coming in. So we're just going to need to go into recess. I just want to make sure that's clear before you vote.
Mrs. Riggs.
I have a question. We received a lot of emails as well today and yesterday that people would have signed up to speak, having known it was going to be on the agenda. So we've got people that don't know and aren't out front that would like to speak as well. So you've got both.
And if they're watching and they want to speak on the agenda, I think we should let them because this whole method circumvented their right to speak and be heard publicly in a public meeting on public business by a public body.
But we we're going to need to add a decision of if we're going to stay till 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning type thing because this is going to be a long one. So we talked about that before, so that's something that we need to talk about again.
And just this is on information, correct?
Correct. So they'll have the opportunity to speak at the next meeting.
My, yes, my recommendation is we just limit it tonight to who's signed up. And then that's why I said this, I feel this needs to be discussed further at the retreat so we have a consistent policy moving forward for. Ms. Ms. Owens, did you have a question or a comment?
I guess for the purposes of tonight, I I can be in agreement with that. Though I'm not happy about it, I the whole reason that I was not in agreement to vote for things being moved to the action section of the agenda today is because I felt like everybody from all viewpoints would be should be able to have the opportunity to hear the information as the information and then to be able to come in and speak on what they've heard on a day that we're going to vote, which is how all of our items tend to come through the agenda. We hear it as an information item, and then we hear it as a as an action item. That didn't happen. And so the speakers and information that will be broadcast is going to be it's going to be biased on one side.
That's what I should have been added last week so everybody on every viewpoint could have been here. Exactly.
Since it wasn't, thanks for jumping in, since it wasn't, Phil. I I would like to see us just move forward with whatever section you signed up to speak on, speak on, because we're going to have this on the agenda as an action item next week. And then everybody who wants to speak on it as the agenda item in advance is able to do so. That's my thought, obviously.
Mrs. Manning.
Yeah, Ms. Melnick, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Melnick.
She just didn't see the queue.
I would like to take this moment to defend the Chair because she is being attacked. I don't I don't care about me being attacked, but I do care about her. She does a wonderful job, and something came through in a way that we typically do not conduct business on this board. There were two resolutions. We as a school board do not do business through resolutions. Now, if you had said you wanted to add something that was not an agenda, she left a very nice message for Mrs. Weems that basically said, this is going to be, this, there's no context to this. If you add, if you if you bring it to the School Board, we will add it to the agenda, and that's what she did. And so to absolutely vilify her on on camera when we did exactly what we said we would do, which was to have the votes to make sure it was added, everybody voted, voted. It's on the agenda. Now we can move through with with context. We can discuss it as information. Next week, it'll be on action, and the public will be able to come. But to say that we have kept the public from speaking is mischaracterizing this entire process. We are moving this in, this is on for 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 information, and I respectfully request that we move on with our meeting and discuss this during information. And I ask that that this board, please, if you have a personal problem with Mrs. Weems, I ask that, I mean, with Mrs. Rye, I ask that you take that up personally and that you refrain from vilifying a pretty remarkable woman who does a really good job on this school board. And I ask that we please that we move on. We have business to take care of.
No.
So we have the motion on the floor. Is there anything more before we put it up to a vote? Mrs. Manning.
So I agree with Ms. Owens and Ms. Riggs, and I'm not vilifying Ms. Rye. I am challenging her decision as the leader of this board and Ms. Melnick. And Ms. Melnick, you didn't have a problem vilifying me on March 23 when you defamed and slandered me then. So this is not about character assassination against Ms. Rye. This is about the decision that to not add it to the agenda when Ms. Weems properly followed our bylaws and presented a resolution. We do operate by resolution because we vote on budget resolutions. At the last meeting, we voted on two different resolutions, a collective bargaining resolution and a substitute motion for a collective bargaining resolution. So I see nowhere that Ms. Weems has not followed or Ms. Hughes have not followed proper board procedures. They have gone over and above and beyond. I believe Ms. Weems contacted the Chair and Vice Chair well in advance of the deadline of getting this on the agenda. And I agree with Ms. Owens and Ms. Riggs that it not being on the agenda does not make us as transparent as we should be, and it should have been on the on the agenda. So that's why I also believe that we need to allow our speakers to be move forward on hearing, hearing on agenda items, and also make sure that their portion is recorded.
So are we ready to proceed with this vote so we can get on with our meeting? All right, so.
I'd like to say something about this vote. This vote right now is for allowing speakers, correct?
Allow, taking the time to switch the designation of some of the non-agenda speakers who so choose, yes.
And for it to be recorded, just to clarify my motion.
Because it's been pointed out that to me that if we allow speakers who did get to sign up today, those who didn't sign up because it wasn't on the agenda, it's not fair to them. They'll get to speak next week, and they'll have four minutes. But the people who speak tonight will speak four minutes, and then they'll turn around and speak again next week. So actually, they're getting eight minutes.
Okay.
So it's just one of those things that I would suggest we do not allow that to happen unless, and as Dr. Spence pointed out, you know, even if we do allow, we're going to have to have a recess to figure out who's going to get to speak and who's not and what order.
So are we ready for a vote? Mrs. Hughes.
I have before thought in various situations, if I'd have known XYZ, I would have shown up, signed up, did whatever. And we did have people who emailed and said, if I'd have known this, I would have signed up. But they didn't, and there were times when I didn't. But there are people that did sign up. They did say what the subject matter was they wanted to speak on, and they're here. Those people should be allowed to speak tonight because the reality is, almost a week ago, we were told we'd have the votes to put it on there, and they are here, and they should be allowed to speak. And if we don't want to have these situations anymore, then we need to not do business this way. As long as something is the business of the board and does not require staff time, where sometimes it reasonably would need to be bumped, you know, to another meeting, then we shouldn't be doing this. As far as going into recess, I sat here earlier while we were talking about this and circled the names of the speakers who signed up to speak on these two items, but they're on non-agenda. So I could actually hand this to Kami. You have it all together in however long it takes you to read this, which is probably a minute or two.
Yeah, I think the point being for recess, just to that staff will have to go out there and make contact with each individual person and get them in line for speaking on the agenda. So I wasn't trying to be combative in a comment that we would need recess. I was asking for time to make that happen and just making sure that when you voted, you were aware that we would need that time. That's all.
And to be clear, everybody's going to get a chance to speak. This was a question of reorder reordering. So with that, the motion on the floor is to allow non-agenda speakers who signed up to speak about equity or some derivative of it to to be moved as agenda speakers. While we're right now voting on this particular issue.
So my, may I state my motion that I made? My motion is to move any any speakers who are here who signed up on non-agenda items on the topic of the mask resolution or Ms. Weems' resolution to clarify equity training to be moved to hearing, to Agenda Item, public hearing. hearing, have it record, and for those who we can't reach out to, if they're speaking on that topic, that we keep the cameras rolling and this continues to be a part of the public record.
All right, so there's the motion restated. All in favor, show a raised hand, please.
I have a question because I'm not clear about your resolution and your list. So on your list, you have individuals speaking on critical race theory in Virginia schools. So does that comply to what your resolution is talking about? Because your resolution said.
Well, that topic is in Ms. Weems.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. The resolution is to clarify equity, training, and teaching. That is a title of your resolution, correct? Or is it CRT? I'm just want to make sure by looking at this list. So your resolution is saying, your resolution said resolution to clarify equity, training, and teaching. And that is not talking about critical CRT. I want to understand that. So before we move forward, I'm just saying, like Dr. Spence has said.
Well, Mrs. Felton, that would be a factor for any, each colleague to take into account if they so choose. Thank you for bringing that matter up. So can we?
Mrs. Manning just indicated that she wants the cameras to be rolling still for the non-agenda items, and that is a change in our bylaws. Am I correct in that?
That portion would be changed, so you would need a majority, supermajority vote on that. Now, if we can locate them, and I don't know if I, how, you know, I would have to go out and talk to these people, work with the speaker team, see if we can get them in here while you're still doing agenda, formal agenda items, we may be able to get them in here. It may be those individuals that we can't get a hold of right away before you need to move on, that might be an issue.
So I do have an issue with keeping the cameras rolling for non-agenda items.
Well, can we cross that bridge if and when we come to it as a separate matter? So we can, so we can put this to a vote, please?
Ms. Lanetti, so is there anything that is going outside of our policy and procedure right now? I guess, I just want to understand if, are we, is there anything that is going outside of policy and procedure?
Your non-agenda items come, and appendix B come after the formal agenda. And so the formal agendas, while you're on the formal agenda is when you have your cameras rolling. And so we don't usually have it on, on afterwards. So that would be a change in procedure. And he knows when we stop, when we come in and out after the meetings, we close sessions, we have to go back on and off on there. So that would be a change in procedure. Now, again, I, given the amount of time, I don't know how many people I have to contact and see if we can work to get them. We might be able to get them in here while you're still doing agenda item, speak, formal agenda item speaker, so that may not be necessary. I can't tell you right now whether you're going, how many people we're talking about.
Is there a way to split the vote then in terms of?
All am in my, all am in my motion to take that part out if, if, if that will appease everyone.
Right. I'm good with that. If, as long as we don't have to keep the cameras rolling because we can make every effort to try to get them in here for formal agenda speaking, that's fine. But I'm not, as long as she takes that out, I'm, I'm okay with the other part.
So the portion, the motion to taking out is the camera, the camera pieces of it. All right. Please show a raised hand if you agree with the motion as presented.
As amended.
As amended, excuse me. Will you still have their hands raised for who's in favor of the motion on the floor? Okay, we have four ayes. All opposed. Please show a raised hand. Madam Clerk, do you have the count?
Yes, we have four in favor. And seven, no.
All right, so that motion fails. All right, so moving on, Superintendent's report. Dr. Spence?
Wait, 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 we need to adopt the agenda.
Oh, we, yes, that's what all this was about to begin with. All right, so the motion on, so now I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended with the additions of F and G. All in favor, or a second, please?
Who did the second?
All right, so approval with raised hand, please.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And now, Dr. Spence, your superintendent report.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. So here are a few items of interest for you and our families to know this evening. First, as a reminder, all schools and administrative offices will be closed next Monday, May 31st, for Memorial Day. And as a reminder, the division's calendar can always be found by visiting our website at vbschools.com. As we speak about May 31st, I would like to take a moment to recognize that day marks two years since the mass shooting at Building Two of the Municipal Center. We all know that May 31st, 2019, is one of the darkest days in the history of our city. And this Friday, May 28th, our city is asking the public and city employees to wear blue and to hold a moment of silence at 4:06 PM, which is the time the first 911 call was received on that day. I'm also asking our school communities to wear blue and participate in that moment of silence if possible. On Monday, May 31st, the city will release a memorial ceremony video at www.loveforvb.com. That website also lists all the programs and memorial displays around the city and suggested individual or family activities such as planning to take in a sunrise on the beach or adding a message to a banner near the Love for VB symbol at Mount Trashmore. Also, please remember that the VB Strong Center located in the Landstown Commons is a hub of support for anyone affected by the mass shooting. While COVID-19 has again made it difficult to us, for us to mourn and remember together in a large group, it is my hope you are able to take advantage of some of the virtual and self-guided opportunities that will allow us to still connect. I hope you and your family can find some time this weekend to remember the lives lost and find some comfort in knowing that we are, in fact, VB Strong. I am pleased next to announce our VBCPS School Nurse of the Year for 2021, Nurse Gloria Liston. Ms. Liston is in her 22nd year of service with VB Schools, and she began her career with the Division in 1999 as a nursing assistant at First Colonial High School. Currently, she is the school nurse at Malibu Elementary. Aside from her role as school nurse, she also serves as Malibu's co-community engagement liaison, where she works to help her school partner with local businesses for school programs, student recognition, and family engagement opportunities. She's a highly, she is also highly regarded by staff, students, and their families for her knowledge, consistency, reliability, caring nature, and dedication to her role. So congratulations again to Nurse Gloria Liston, and thank you for your hard work, your dedication, kindness, and love that you provide to your students and staff every day. Finally, I'm proud to announce that the Division has been recognized by the American School Counselor Association, also known as ASCA, for delivering an exemplary school counseling program at Rosemont Elementary School. This is the first time in the Division's history for a school to earn this award, and Rosemont is one of only two schools in Hampton Roads to achieve the honor of being a recognized ASCA Model Program, also known as RAMP. RAMP is earned by school counseling programs that consistently adhere to the ASCA National Model, which emphasizes student achievement and success and encourages implementation and outcomes through data-driven practices. There are only a little more than 1,100 school counseling programs from 47 states that have been designated as RAMP sites since 2003, when this program began. Research findings indicate fully implemented school counseling programs are associated with a range of positive student educational and behavioral outcomes. So I would like to offer my sincerest thanks to our Student Support Services team members, our counseling staff, Dr. Alavita Green, Mr. Bobby Jameson, School Counselor Jamie Wiss, and everyone at Rosemont Elementary for their dedication to our children, for the support of our counseling programs. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Approval of meeting minutes from May 11, 2021, the regular school board meeting. Madam Clerk, do you care to share this amendment here before I take a motion?
Yes, it was brought to my attention that during one of the resolution votes, there were seven nays. All the school board members, there were only six school board members listed. The seventh member was Ms. Holt, so the minutes will be updated to reflect her nay vote to the resolution.
Any other modifications? Okay, hearing non-motion to approve. Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Ms. Owens. Okay, all in favor, raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. That leads us to the hearing of citizens and delegations on formal agenda items. We will now hear comments on agenda items from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to this meeting. In-person speakers will, will be called first. It's not necessary, speakers begin speaking once their name is called. As a reminder, each speaker has four minutes to present and will be given a 30-second warning before time expires. Once the speaker's time has expired, the speaker is asked to stop making remarks. And in-person speakers are asked to keep their masks securely fitted during their time in the building and while addressing the school board. Speakers not able to do so will be accommodated through the use of electronic means from the school administration lobby area. Please keep in mind, the school board invites the public to also submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, would you please introduce our speaker?
Our first speaker is Paula Chang.
Welcome.
Welcome, and thank you for letting me speak here tonight on a pretty interesting evening, I would say. Um, let me just start this. Okay, I am going to speak specifically to agenda items regarding the Policy Review Committee meetings and recommendations, and specifically, Appendix A and B, and specifically addressing the, the adoption of Appendix C to standardize the procedure that school board standing committees will follow as they go forward. And I think a lot of this will apply also to any meeting that you're going to have here. And I'm going to start with my remarks by talking about my dad. Last time I was here, I talked about my husband. And I'm going to talk about my father, who was a journalist and a columnist at the Boston Globe for 35 years. And he made a great point with us as he raised us, to teach us that journalism and writing and reporting is very much about what is included in the information that they give because when you have journalism or writing, you can check facts with what's included. But he said, and he taught us, and this was echoed by a professor that I had in college later and is so important, that it's not always what you're told and the facts that you can check that are important. It's those that are kept from you. It's those that the media does not tell you. It's those that you are basically, have hidden from you. And he further extended that to us by saying this also applies. He says it's the media, which he knew very well from being a journalist and for writing for everything. But he also said it applies to government, that government functions by giving you information and sometimes by not giving you information. And so I bring that to the point of my speaking this evening, which is to talk about the, the standing committee procedures, which extend, of course, to any committee, not just in here. It could be anywhere. And basically that, when you have your committees, and I sat in on some of these meetings, you go over your policies and your procedures, and you have an agenda. And I know that you're very specific about your agenda and there's an expectation upon us as citizens that we, when we come here to speak or when we listen in, our, our expectation when we listen in or when we attend meetings is, that our subcommittee meetings, is that we not speak, and we don't. Our expectation when we come here is that we speak to your agenda, which we try to do. And that means that part of what makes a very organized approach and procedures in your committees is your planning for your agenda. And it's not just what happens within the meeting, it's what happens preparing for the meeting, which would be the agenda. So about that, I would like to say a couple of things. One is that I've noticed that we have subcommittees that have their meetings, and I've attended one recently, that I actually thought was very well-run. It was very gracious, and I learned a lot and have more, you know, just even more respect for the people that work here. But I did notice that we had no agenda. The expectation for us is that we follow your agenda. The expectation from you is that you present the agenda and that you present it ahead of time.
30 seconds?
So that we, as the public, can do it, can know what the, what you're doing and what our First Amendment rights and what we can see are. The other is that the agenda items that are chosen to go on and the agenda items that are left off intentionally are items that we, as a public, get to see, and you should only be removed or not included if there is a legitimate reason, and there hasn't been for tonight. That's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker was an online speaker, Richard Wood. He asked to be moved to the non-agenda speaker, so that is our last agenda speaker for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight, we have no consent agenda items, so we move on to action. 12A Personnel Report, Administrative Appointments, Motion to Approve. Ms. Franklin, and a second, Mrs. Hughes. Any discussion? Okay, please show your approval with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
And Dr. Spence, would you please proceed with your announcements?
Yes, ma'am, I will. Thank you very much. Got quite a few this evening. Starting with Leslie, and I'm, I'm going to butcher this because it's brand new, but to me, but I think it's Leslie Eitner, could be Leslie Edner. Leslie, I apologize in advance. You all will recognize her as Leslie Lehner, who's been serving in Virginia Beach with distinction as a teacher at Larkspur Middle School, Salem High School, and most recently has been serving as assistant principal at Green Run High School. We're pleased this evening that you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next principal at Plaza Middle School. Congratulations to her. I'd also then like to recognize Tom Quinn. Mr. Quinn has served in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Landstown Middle School, Plaza Middle School, Kempsville High School. He's been an administrative assistant at Great Neck Middle School. He's been an assistant principal at Great Neck Middle School, and we're pleased this evening that you've accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next principal at Great Neck Middle School. Next, I'm going to recognize Amy Skidobor. Amy has served in Virginia Beach in the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. She's been a transition specialist and a teacher in that office. She's been a teacher at Salem High School, most recently has been serving as a school improvement specialist at Salem High School. I'm pleased this evening that you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next coordinator of the Visual and Performing Arts Academy at Salem High School. Congratulations. Next, I'm going to recognize Danielle Calucci. Ms. Calucci has served across the country in various roles as a teacher, assistant principal, and teaching and reading interventionist. She served in Virginia Beach as a coordinator of language and arts in the Department of Teaching and Learning. She served as a principal at Luxford Elementary School, most recently has been serving as the executive director of elementary teaching and learning for, in the Department of Teaching and Learning. We're pleased this evening that you have accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next senior executive director of elementary schools and the Department of School Leadership, and that, of course, with the transition of Ms. Lewis to retirement. Congratulations, Danielle. I guess she must be back there in the lobby. Hello, Ms. Lewis. Also this evening, I'd like to recognize Matthew Lainey. Matt has served with distinction in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Princess Anne, by the way, also a Green Run Stallion graduate and fellow classmate, has served with distinction as a teacher at Princess Anne High School, an assistant principal at First Colonial High School, and Salem High School, principal of Larkspur Middle School, principal of Salem High School, most recently has been serving as executive director of secondary teaching and learning in the Department of Teaching. in the Department of Teaching and Learning. This evening, we're pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Matt to serve as the next senior executive director of high schools and the Department of School Leadership. Congratulations to you, Mr. Delaney, who's probably back there as well. This next one, I'd like to recognize Crystal Pate. Let me just pause before I do, if it's okay, for just a second, and acknowledge that the reason that we're recognizing this Pate is because we've had the retirement of a significant administrator and leader in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Not yet, he's not gone yet. He's actually here on Zoom tonight because he is out of town. But if we could just take a moment to recognize the service and contribution of Farrell Hansiker, our current chief finance officer to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Farrell, we're standing up for you, buddy. Now with that, we want to recognize Crystal Pate. Crystal has served with distinction in a wide array of industry positions, but has been serving in Virginia Beach with distinction in the Office of Business Services, in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. She has served as the coordinator of accounting in the Office of Business Services. Most recently, has been serving as the director of business services in the Department of Budget and Finance. And we're really thrilled this evening you've accepted our recommendation for Ms. Pate to join the senior staff as the next chief financial officer for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And you'll be hearing from her later. Next, I would like to recognize Robert, if you didn't know, Robertson, Don Robertson. Don has served, as you all know, with distinction in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Princess Anne Junior High School, Green Run High School, assistant principal at Bayside High School. He's been the chief strategy and innovation officer in the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability. Most recently, has been serving as chief schools officer in the Department of School Leadership. And this evening, I'm pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Dr. Robertson to serve as the next chief of staff in the Office of Superintendent. Congratulations, Dr. Robertson. Now, if I might just take another moment, I'd like to acknowledge the contributions of a great friend, somebody I've known for over 20 years, have had the opportunity to work with across two districts, and considered to be both a professional and personal dear, great friend and human being. And of course, has been here in Virginia Beach for some time, serving as the chief of staff. And you all know he's been appointed as the next superintendent of Bedford County Schools. So I'd like to just recognize Mark Bergen, Dr. Bergen. But wait, there's more. With Dr. Robertson's shift to the Office of the Chief of Staff, that's going to leave an opening in our docile team. And so I'd like to talk about Jean Saltoner this evening. Jean, as you all know, served with distinction in Virginia Beach for quite some time as a teacher at Brandon Junior High School, Virginia Beach Junior High School. He's been in the Department of Instruction. He's been an assistant principal at Bayside High School. He's been principal of Salem Middle School, Bayside High School, and Great Neck Middle School. And this evening, I'm pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Dr. Saltoner to serve as the next chief schools officer in the Department of School Leadership. Congratulations to Jean. And then finally, one of the reasons that you may have been wondering, well, why is Matt Delaney coming in to be the... Okay, well, you know, we're not quite there yet, Sharon. You know, you may have been wondering why Matt Delaney was coming into the role of high school director, and that is because of Cheryl Woodhouse, who has been serving in that role recently. She has served, as you all know, with distinction in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Plaza Middle School, Corporate Landing, Larkspur. She was an assistant principal there. She was an assistant principal at Bayside High School. She has served as the principal at Independence Middle School, Tallwood High School. She has served as the senior executive director of middle schools in the Department of School Leadership. Most recently, has been in the position as the senior executive director of high schools in the Department of School Leadership. This evening, we're really excited that you have accepted our recommendation for Cheryl to serve as the next chief human resources officer on our senior staff. Congratulations. And then finally, before I finish, if I could have one more just moment to recognize somebody else. The reason we need a new chief human resources officer is because of the retirement of another outstanding and exceptional leader in Virginia Beach, who's been here for many years, so many in fact, that when I first got here, I told him he had to stop saying he was from Philadelphia, because he's not. He's from Virginia Beach at this point. Has served with distinction here in an incredible number of capacities, in docile and human resources, as a teacher, assistant principal, principal. And I'd like for us to recognize his distinguished service in Virginia Beach. If you could help me recognize John Mira. Okay, that's it, Madam Chair.
That's all?
For now, more to come.
Well, we wish Godspeed to our departing administrators and look forward to future partnership in these new roles with the other staff, so thank you. All right, action item B, Workforce Readiness Award Application. And we have Dr. Lockett here, so to open it up for discussion, can I ask for a motion to approve? Ms. Franklin and a second, Mrs. Anderson. All right. And Dr. Lockett, would you care to begin with some remarks?
Sure.
For us? I know you have shared, this has been shared with us in advance, and you can offer some summary and context for us?
Definitely, I can do that. So good evening, everyone. I'm here this evening, as you know, to share the opportunity that we've had with the Virginia School Board Association to put forth a program for the Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award. And I appreciate you all reviewing that information and approving here in advance. And I would like to share just a couple of things about the award. The application process itself consists of selecting one innovative workforce development program or project and answering five application questions, which you all have, about the nominated program, and then seeking school board approval, and I thank you for that. And then we have to submit electronically by June 1st. The innovative program that we chose, just for the viewing public, was our Virginia Beach Schools Career and Internship Speaker Panel Series, presented monthly with almost 5,000 students taking part this year. The COVID-19 pandemic altered ambitious plans to launch an initiative to provide a work-based learning experience before graduation to every student in Virginia Beach. And I do say altered and not derailed, because we're still working on that. This program is a partnership between the Office of Technical and Career Education, the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, and Junior Achievement of Greater Hampton Roads, designed to connect students with industry leaders to learn about high-demand, high-wage careers in our region and serve as a networking event for students to informally meet professionals from identified career clusters. So beginning in November, the Office of Technical or Career Education hosted panels. We started in Google Meet and moved to Zoom. These panels were moderated by the Workforce Council and Junior Achievement of Greater Hampton Roads. Every month focused on a different career cluster, and a unique panel was offered for each block during the school day to meet the needs of more students. The panels were made up of approximately five speakers and generally accommodated 300 students, teachers, and staff, and community volunteers each class block. They explored careers in advertising, marketing, maritime, construction trades, renewable energy, including offshore wind, banking and finance, healthcare, and entrepreneurship. Although the format for the discussions evolved, as the team found ways to improve the experience each month, the general format consisted of a welcome with introductions and housekeeping, 40 minutes of Q and A with pre-screened and student questions. Students were able to send questions through the chat and indicate if they wanted to speak live to the panelists, which was a great experience for them. And then the panels ended with more personal breakout sessions that allowed students to have 10 to 20 minutes of discussion in a small group with one of the panelists. We were lucky to have WHRO, our local television station, curate one day of the panels when we did offshore wind and renewable energy, so that's very exciting. And you can see that in the packet if you'd like to check it out. And I would like to say that we had almost 100 professionals, business professionals, give their time to be on these panels. Some of them, you know, helping us multiple times, so that was very exciting for kids. Just to give you a little teacher perspective, Chris Jacobs, our I-Lab teacher at Green Run High School, speaks highly of the experience, and this is a quote from Chris. "The Career and Internship Speaker Panel Series provided our students with meaningful, real-world, real-time, and future-oriented career information from inspiring members of our community currently practicing the field. For our students to be able to seek successful financial advisors, renewable energy leaders, nurses, and so many others that look like them and are willing to not only share stories about their pathways to success, but are also willing to help our students build a network of professionals to aid them in finding their pathways is a game changer. The sessions were informative, inspiring, practical, and helpful." And we appreciate those words from Chris. We also appreciate the support of the board for this project and would like to give a special thanks to Mrs. Felton, who serves on our... as the school board liaison to the General Advisory Council for Career and Technical Education, and Mrs. Melnick, who serves on the Board of Junior Achievement of Greater Hampton Roads. So thank you all for your support. And if you all have any questions about the program or the nomination, I'm happy to answer those.
All right, well, thank you.
Mrs. Anderson.
Just want to say thank you. I'm glad that you're doing this. All the work that you all do makes us very proud. Thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you. Keep your fingers crossed for us. Do you do in first, and we'll hope to hear some good news.
Took the words out of my mouth. Okay, we thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to budget transfers, so we'll begin.
Madam, you have to take a vote, Madam Chair.
Action, thank you. So all in favor of this Workforce Readiness Award application, show a raised hand of support, please.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Now on to budget transfers. So motion to approve? Mrs. Riggs and a second, Mrs. Melnick. Okay. Hello, Ms. Pate.
Hello.
Discussion and questions, and do you want to, do you care to start?
Sure. Sure. So just on the budget transfers, that basically we're just at the time of year where we start looking at year-end closing, and these are just kind of cleaning up cost centers. They're all really related to salary and benefits based on how the budget was developed and certainly what happened as far as actual expenditures incurred. So you see things like you have someone that's on a VRS-1 plan, and then we ended up hiring somebody that's on a hybrid plan, and they have different benefits. And so this is really just a cleanup. There's really no new spending related to these transfers. It's just in preparation for our year-end.
So with that, colleagues, questions? And if you need a moment for to look over the hard copy, this was shared electronically. All right, then, last call for any questions before we put this to a vote. All right, all in favor, please show a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you. Okay, information portion of our meeting beginning with interim financial statements.
I'm the next two, so. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. As of April 30th, the overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year as illustrated in our first graph. Our March 31 ATM came in at 63,452, which is 325 students below the state's projection and 3,199 below the ADM used to build the budget. Based on this final March 31 ATM and the projected funding provided for COVID-19 relief payments and no-loss funding, our revised projection of state revenue is a surplus of approximately $5.4 million. Based on the 2021 General Assembly Special Session, the Virginia Department of Education is required to adjust state payments for the COVID-19 Relief Fund based on actual sales tax distributions to school divisions in fiscal year 2021. Final confirmation of sales tax distributions to school divisions is not completed until mid-June, and this requirement will delay the publication of the fiscal year 2021 final payment calculation template until late June. The Department of Ed will provide a technical update to school divisions in early June, and that'll include a summary of impacts related to the final March 31 ATM, some updates to foster care payments, and updates to the no-loss program payment. And of course, the updates to the COVID-19 Relief Fund, detailed analysis of the March 31 ATM, basic aid adjustments, those are the ones that will be updated in late June once the sales tax distributions are determined. Federal revenues continue to show favorable trend as of the end of April. Year-to-date, we have received approximately $2.1 million over our budget, and that's mainly due to our impact aid payments. Our other sources of revenues year-to-date through April continue to lag, even though we are seeing some areas pick up, such as the sale of capital assets, vehicles and buses, and revenues of the Stop Arm Enforcement Program. This area of revenue likely will become unfavorable when we close the books due to the effects of COVID-19 on facility rentals and program tuition. This next graph shows that sales tax receipts are an acceptable level. Year-to-date through April, we are approximately $3 million higher than the same time last year. And for May, we are showing an increase in sales tax receipts from May of last year of approximately $1.5 million. Our last graph shows the expenditures and encumbrances trend that continues to also remain acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. And that concludes this presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Colleagues, last call. All right, then, all in... This is now information, okay? Okay, we thank you. And now this leads right into Information B, the final operating budget reconciliation for 2021, 2021, 2022.
So again, good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. We went to provide the board with an update regarding the final 2021, 2022 budget reconciliation based on actions by city council on May 11th. Your agenda page provides you with a background summary and associated timeline of the overall budget reconciliation process. Also, the board received a memo on May 7th from Mr. Hansiker, which provided additional information where city council on May 4th created a public safety dedication and further adjusted the real estate tax rate by .0075%. Both of these actions reduced local revenue by $5,103,663. Included with that memo was a spreadsheet that showed how we recommended balancing the budget, and I will speak to these adjustments shortly. In city council's May 11th meeting, council included another 1-cent reduction to the real estate tax rate, further reducing revenue sharing formula revenues by an additional $2,916,380. So with that additional $2.9 million and on top of the $5.1 million reduction from May 4th, the total reduction is a little over $8 million. We do have one slide to share with you this evening with information on how the school district plans to balance the budget for this reduction. See, oh, that is not my slide. Sorry, that's my slide. So as you can see, we started with the $8,020,043. The first three adjustments were, Farrell actually addressed those in the memo that he sent. I'll just go over them briefly. So the first one for $1,820,879 is to remove the revenue reserve that was built into the budget to prepare for potential reduction in revenue estimates. The second adjustment was to keeping the employer's health insurance contribution flat and rely on the fund balance that's in the health insurance fund, so that's $1,873,084. The third one is to reduce the non-personnel line item cut that we originally restored in the proposed budget. We had to retain that and pull that back. The fourth one is to reduce the amount budgeted to increase allowances for advanced degrees. We originally had budgeted $3 million, and now we're back down to about 100... $1.7 million, and that ended up being about $1,262,972. And then the final adjustment for $571,349, and that is to a baseline adjustment to account for bus driver vacancies that we expect to have at the beginning of the fiscal year. So that includes this presentation. As you know, Farrell is also on the line, and we will be glad to answer any questions you all may have.
Colleagues, Mrs. Manning.
I just want to acknowledge the hard work that you and your team and Farrell have done through this budget process. And, you know, it continues even after we have voted. So just want to acknowledge that and the hard work that you guys do to keep us on track. It's very important. Your job is so important, and we're going to miss Farrell, but we're glad to have you aboard.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Spence, do you care to weigh in at all about this?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am. Just, I mean, just to, just to say that, obviously, it's, it's concerning the, this sort of trend of, of budgeting based on a revenue-sharing formula and then having some adjustments. I understand that the City Council may make tax adjustments. I'd say the, we had worked very hard over the last several years with City Council and with the city finance staff to remove the set-asides and get to a revenue-sharing formula that was purely percentage-based, and now we're facing another set-aside. So, I think that's something maybe leadership would, would want to take up with City Council leadership.
And to add to that, that's, that is in the works now, scheduling, and that was a request from the board to the board leadership and staff leadership on our end meet with our City Council counterparts, and we will be doing so. We will be doing so hopefully sometime in June, it's looking like. Mrs. Anderson.
I just want to reiterate what Dr. Spence said. This, this is a hard pill to swallow. We have to accept it because we don't really have control over this. City Council has the final say over our budget, but it's being perceived by many people in the community that, you know, this is just a temp, hopeful, hopefully just a temporary thing, but I, I hope that they're not Robin Peter or Pay Paul, because I'm not begrudging our police officers and our firefighters a penny that they earn. They earn every cent of it, and I'm happy that they're getting an eight-and-a-half percent raise. But, you know, basically, we were told informally, I was told, you know, well, 5% is a lot of a raise to give to, to school employees, and then they turn around and do this to us. So, I, I'm not happy with what's happened, and I just wanted to publicly state that I don't think this was the right thing for City Council to do, and I may, maybe some of you all disagree with me, but I just don't think this was the, this is the way that City Council should be handling things by cutting the school board budget this much. Thank you.
And if I could just clarify based on your comment, it, these are permanent cuts. These aren't temporary cuts. These aren't one-time. These are, you know, reduction to the overall tax rate is a permanent reduction in revenue, and then the set-aside is, as far as we've been told, a permanent set-aside. So, that would be a, an ongoing revenue loss as well.
So, am I correct in the set-aside as something that they plan to do each year?
Yeah, I believe that's a permanent set-aside.
Right.
We've had those before, and there still was one or two left after the sort of ongoing adjustments that we've been working on with City Council over the course of the last several years. But, we had eliminated most of those, as you recall, during the last, if really, most of that happened during the last budget conversation, and so this is kind of going in the opposite direction.
So, I'm just, I just want the public to know that I'm not happy with what City Council has done, and I don't think it's appropriate for them to make these kind of cuts when we're hurting and when we're trying to recruit teachers and we're trying to give decent raises to our, to our staff so that we can keep teachers and not have them, you know, leave because they're not being paid adequately. This is something that the public needs to be aware of. So, I just wanted to make that public statement out there, and, you know, there'll be people out there, I'm sure, that will send me emails and say, oh, you're wrong on this, you know, but this city, we have, we have a large budget, and I realize that we're in hard times because of COVID, but I don't think a permanent cut like this is, is necessary.
And you can't look at it as a one-year thing. I mean, if you, if you add this up over the next 10 years and the impact this is going to have on our budget, this is, this is pretty significant and has the potential to put us in a really bad place. Thank you for mentioning that.
All right. We thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, this leads us to the federal grants portion, intent to apply for federal grants for school year 2021-22. And Ms. Calucci, and again, congratulations to you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, Members of the Board, and Dr. Spence. My name is Danielle Calucci, and I am the Executive Director of the Office of Elementary Teaching and Learning. This evening, I will provide you with an overview of the 2021-2022 federal grant applications for programs authorized under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965, as amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015. Federal guidelines require school board approval of these applications. The Virginia Department of Education has established an application deadline of July 1, 2021. Next slide. This slide provides an overview of the past, current, and projected funding amounts for each grant. The final 2021-2022 award amounts for all grants will be determined at a later date. Level funding amounts based on current year awards are used for the purpose of developing the 2021-2022 application budgets. Do you need more time to look at that last slide? Okay, thank you. The Title I Part A Grant is anticipated for just over $11.3 million. The application was prepared, and schools were selected to be Title I schools using free and reduced lunch meals data, as well as data from direct certification reports for schools. Title I Part A funds provide additional financial assistance to schools with high percentages of children from low-income families to help ensure that all children meet challenging state academic standards. The 2021-2022 application includes Title I and pre-K support, staff and resources, instructional staffing allocations beyond the division allocations, literacy leaders, math specialists, instructional administrative assistants, school counselors, behavior intervention teachers and assistants, gifted resource teachers, an ESL teacher, and a social worker. Professional learning and family engagement, which are both mandatory components of this grant, are also included in the application. A memo dated 20, May 20th, 2021, was sent to the board with an overview of the 21-22 Title I Part A programs and supports, as well as the administration's recommendations for schools to receive Title I funding for the 21-22 school year. The Title I Part D Neglected Delinquent or At-Risk Grant, Youth Grant, is anticipated for just under $265,000. The purpose of Title I Part D is to improve educational services to neglected and delinquent children and youth under the age of 21 in correctional facilities and to other at-risk populations to prepare them for secondary school completion, training, employment, and further education. In addition, the funds are used to support students residing in delinquent facilities, to support the transition of students from those facilities, and the Virginia Beach Juvenile Detention Center back to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, including the Renaissance Academy, and to support dropout prevention programs. Title II Part A is a grant anticipated for just over $1.5 million. The purpose of the Title II Part A Grant is to increase academic achievement for all students through improving teacher quality. The Title II Grant will fund 18 instructional coaches as either literacy leaders or math specialists in schools to serve as instructional coaches in elementary, middle, and high schools. The Title III Part A Grant is anticipated at just over $183,000. Title III Part A is utilized to fund the salary and benefits of English learner instructional specialist. This specialist assists ESL and classroom teachers with instructional support, as well as provides professional development for ESL and classroom teachers. The grant also provides funding for educators to attend professional learning relative to English learners and best practices. The 2021-22 application includes funds to support stipends for English learner family engagement liaisons and to support family engagement activities. Additionally, the grant will fund Elevation, which is a digital platform that allows teachers and administrators to access EL student data, supports digital meetings for student accommodation planning and monitoring purposes, and provides federally mandated documents in multiple languages. The Title IV Part A Grant is anticipated at $939,072. Aligned to the Division's Strategic Action Agenda, Title IV Part A funds are intended to improve students' academic achievement by increasing the capacity of school divisions to provide all students with access to a well-rounded education, improve school conditions for student learning, and increase the effective use of technology. Supports from the Title IV Part A Grant will include, but is not limited to, providing materials, resources, and training for safe and healthy teachers and students, instructional materials for middle school, summer reading intervention programs, summer camps, tutoring, fees for free and reduced meals, AP and IB students, SEL, and trauma-informed practices training, and graduation labs to increase academic support and graduation rates. Thank you for allowing me to present this information to you this evening. The team stands ready to answer questions if you may have any.
Colleagues. Ms. Owens.
It's a quick one, and I'm not sure if it's more of a Dr. Spence question or not. The employees that we have employed that we're paying through the grant funds, are they listed as, I don't know, grant employees where their employment is based on grant renewal, or are we consider them contract employees, and we were able to secure the grant, but if we hadn't secured the grant, we were going to try and come up with the funding some other way?
So, they are full-time employees, but there are some grants that we do have part-time employees, but they are contracted, but their funding source goes through the grant. Certain grants, yes, it is dependent on the funding, and those employees are informed that this could be a temporary position dependent on grant funds.
Okay. That was my question.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you all.
Oh, Ms., I'm sorry. I did come, I did think of something. And, and this, this comes actually generated out of a school visit, because, you know, we, we sometimes, or I sometimes, will ask a principal, you know, are there things, you know, the school board can do for you? So, what determines which schools get math, or math specialists? The word is used interchangeably with coach. Some refer to them as math coaches. Are those two different things in this summer grant?
They are one and the same.
This is within the grant frame, but then there's another, is there another category of math coaches that are outside of this framework? Is that making sense?
So, yes, there are division-funded math specialists and reading specialists. The majority at the elementary level of our math coaches, who are also sometimes certified math specialists, are funded through the Title II Grant. And so, that grant outlines, look for the needs, the resources available at a school, the free and reduced lunch percentage there, to, and data based on performance and to identify which schools would benefit most from that support. That grant funds 18 coaches. And often, we split them among schools, and some of them serve at two schools so that more schools get the benefit of that support. If we aren't able to provide a math coach in some situations to a school, I have a team in DTO that is made up of dynamic five instructional specialists that are all endorsed in the area of math specialists, and they support those schools as well.
Okay, thank you for that, and we thank your team members, all of you, for being here tonight with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for your support.
Information, Item D, Superintendent Evaluations Instrument Amendments Effective July 1. And we did give you a heads-up that this was forthcoming. So, welcome, Ms. Lanetti.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Camille Lanetti, and I'm here on behalf of the Governance Committee, which has been working with the superintendent the better part of this year on redoing his evaluation instrument. I came to you several meetings ago because we needed to amend the evaluation instrument that you will be using this June, which will be evaluating the superintendent for FY '21. You, I told you at that time, we would need to come back to you and approve an instrument that will be effective on FY '22, which begins on July 1. There's a slight difference on this. As indicated on the cover sheet, the Virginia Department of Education made some regulations, regulations changes to in February, in 2020 about changes that could be made to the evaluation instrument. The value instrument, evaluation instrument we've used with superintendents was developed for, I believe, Dr. Merrill, who first did it. I think Mr. Edwards. It was a very long time ago you adopted that instrument. Because we worked with it last year, we began to realize that there needed to be some changes, and that's what Mrs. Williams is working with that, and Mr. Edwards, who is still on the Governance Committee, worked with the superintendent. So, they, I think the superintendent explained to you last time, the significant amount of changes you did to the instrument had to do with realigning what we call the indices. Under the seven standards, there are indices that you will use to grade them. Those indices will remain the same as we presented to you about two meetings ago. The difference would be the weighting on the standards, and that was one of the changes that was allowed under the new guidelines. We looked at some of the weighting differences. Speaking to the instrument, I think Mrs. Williams or the Governance Committee members can discuss with you, and Dr. Spence can explain to you how they came up with it, but that really now the changes on the weighting of the standards, you don't have a lot of flexibility. This is a minor amount of flexibility that the Virginia Department of Education grants to. So, those changes are being made in the instrument. We've included the instrument for you to look at. Because there have been significant changes in this instrument from when we initially adopted it for Dr. Merrill, we wanted to make sure everybody was looking at it and had the chance to deal with it. If you wrote on this, when you wrote on this, at the next meeting, this will become the instrument that you will use with your superintendent, starting on July 1, 2021, until you amend it afterwards. And again, I think the Governance Committee members could better explain to you how they came to the determination, if there are any questions.
I think we're looking for Mrs. Lanetti. Is the new weighted?
It's.
Let's see where that shows up. Yeah.
It's on like the.
That's what we'd like to draw everybody's attention to, I think, and allow.
And there's, the change is highlighted also on about the second or third page, kind of the different percentages.
One of the changes, the Virginia Department of Education said that you could make, they all, standard number seven had to be at least equal to the other standards. And so, it could be more, but it had to be at least equal to the other standards. So, this is the balancing of the weighting system, you'll see. And for those of you who've done this before, I think Mrs. Franklin is probably the only one that hasn't done this yet, you'll see this when we calculate it, it all calculates out, and that's what you'll see on page 26, how that calculates in.
Mrs. Williams, do you care to just embellish a little more?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, basically, if you have the standards here, seven standards on the current way that we used to do it, the number seven standard, which is academic success, or let me see what it's actually called. Division, student academic progress was weighted a lot more. And so, the whole discussion was, we were then given the ability to weight it the same or to weight it a little bit more. So, Dan and I called, Mr. Edwards and I called different school divisions. We kind of did some digging around and talking to other members. We felt like academic progress for a superintendent that's in charge of a school division was very, very important. So, we wanted to weight that a little bit more, but we didn't want to weight it as high as I had been previously, especially after this past year that, you know, we've had. So, so we came up with, with everything weighted a 1.25, except for the academic success is a 2.5. So, it was kind of a compromise.
So, any questions, folks, at this point in time? You will have two weeks to reach out to committee members, but now's also an opportunity. Okay, then.
And clarification, this will not be the instrument you use next week when you're doing the evaluation. Use the one we showed you last time. This will be what you're using on July 1.
All right, that, that segues us into PRC, Policy Review Recommendations.
Again, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Camille Lanetti, and on behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I will be bringing you recommendations this evening. The first recommendation is, we are back with Appendix B. I brought this to you last time. We had made some challenges having to do with the Title IV hearings on citizens and delegations. It came up at the end of the last meeting. One of the procedures we normally have is if you do closed session, you have to come back out and read, and sometimes it's an action item you might want to be taking. So, based on the recommendation that came up after that meeting, we decided the recommendation would be that you would change the order of voting. would be that you would change the order of voting on remaining action items and recess into workshop or closed session. Normally, you would go first into recess, into workshop or closed session, which is normally roughly number eighteen on your agenda, and then you would come back to voting remaining actions items. If you remember the last time, it created some complications for us at the recommendation of Mrs. Anderson, we brought this back to PRC, and they're recommending that you switch the order on Appendix B, and that is the only change, although you saw this appendix at the last meeting, that was the changing of the titles on the agenda speaker, the formal agenda speakers and informal agenda speakers. This time, all we're asking you to do is recommend a change, to change the order from voting on meeting items to have them before you go into closed session or workshop. So that would be the only change on Appendix B. Are there any questions I can ask? Answer for you. All right, moving on to the next one, Appendix C. Appendix C is brand-new, which is why it's all in red. I started speaking with the Governance Committee well over a year ago. My concern was, as we're standardized committees, you'll remember last year, the internal battle of trying to get Ballot 128 finalized, and we were setting up our committees on there. My concern was that we make sure that the committees, the standing committees that meet the requirements to have to comply with the Freedom of Information Act, that they follow the appropriate procedures for that. So I wanted to standardize some of the procedures. I spent a long time talking to the Governance Committee about this. So Appendix B would be titled, School Board Standing Committee Procedures. We have not had something like this before. All this is doing is setting out some of the rules that will have to be followed by those committees that are required to be FOIA compliant. Again, talk of the meeting notices, how you're going to post on the committee webpage. Governance Committee worked with also Committee Relations, and I'm not even sure what the current title is, media, on a webpage. If you haven't seen it, we do have a webpage on for committees where we can post things to. We want to make sure that we understood what the rules were on electronic meetings, public access to meetings, agendas, and following the appropriate procedures. So that's what Appendix C would be doing. It will set out just some general rules to follow. The understanding will be, for each one of the standing committees, there will be a staff member assigned to it, and each one of the standing committees has to have a school board member who is a chair of that committee, that whoever's the chair of the committee will work with your standing committee sign staff person to make sure all these things get done, so that we're, make sure that we're FOIA compliant. And again, as mentioned by one of the prior speakers, this will be then more transparent to the public. So these procedures are just setting forth some of the rules that will be followed. Again, it's the same rules you follow as the school board, we just want to make sure the committee members understood that. Are there any questions I can answer on, on new proposed Appendix C?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, to the Policy Committee, great work on this. This is really great. I've had a lot of the public reach out to me. When is the committee meeting? How do I access it? So I think this is great. On Item B3, it says, Sending Out the Agenda and Supporting Documents. It's my understanding of FOIA that if, when you send that agenda out and post it three days in advance, three working days in advance, if you send out supporting documents to the committee, you also need to include those with the agenda. Is that correct?
It should go out, the agenda materials should go out at the same time. Obviously, there are supplements, it's not unusual to supplement to them, but with their supporting materials along with the agenda, it should go out. And it should, and when the agenda and the agenda materials are available to the, in this case, committee members or school board members, they should be made available to the public at the same time.
Could I suggest adding that under B3? Because it's, it, the title says, Sending Out Agenda and Supporting Documents, but it doesn't address supporting documents in that.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So the meeting agenda and supporting documents in the first line?
Yeah, and then, and then adding in there, when the agenda is posted, any supporting documents that have been provided to the committee members need to be also provided to the public, or however you want to word it.
Um, I think the last one is, if not posted to the webpage, the agenda should, and should be materials, should be made available to the public. Our goal is, with the new webpages, that we will get them onto the webpages so they're made available, but obviously, if you ask for requests, we'll, we have to make them available to you.
But maybe when the agenda and agenda materials, because it doesn't, it doesn't address the supporting documentation. And then the other question that I have is, you know, I, I don't know if any of our committees are meeting electronically anymore, but making sure that if they are, that a Zoom link is posted, because I've had people contact me and say, how do I get into this, into this meeting? And, and there wasn't a link there. So I don't know if we're even doing that anymore, if that needs to be addressed or not.
That will depend on what the state of emergency is. I know for some of the committees that I work with, we have been very careful about getting the agenda, the agenda having the notices in there and getting them on the committee page. Part of the reason I wanted to get these committee procedures in here was to make sure that we understood that these committees should be following the same thing. I know some of the committees I work with, we do get it out there, because I personally post the notice out there.
Yeah, seen some, but not all. I have seen some that did not have the link.
Yeah, so we, we did, and again, that was, we had thought, I thought we'd gotten these through, we had not gotten them to the school board at this point. We've been talking about them for the better part of a year now, and it's time now to make sure everybody's on the same page so that we can do that. So we will take, and a part of this procedure will be then, we will take this to the staff serving those committees and make sure that they get that up. We, we've worked out procedures for the webpage, he'll get that up, and we've identified staff members for every committee, so we will.
But ultimately, the oversight belongs to the chair of the committee to make sure it happens.
Yes, and we're going to back you up with staff members to help you with that.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be clear, this draft has, was developed a year ago, and it was placed in the policy manual, so in effect, a lot of this has been started already, and it is.
And it was an oversight on our part. We realized we'd, we had mentioned it to PRC, but we'd never got it back up to the school board because it got incorporated into the protocols manual, but we wanted to make sure Appendix C got added and formally adopted by the school board.
Right, but it isn't the first time we're all seeing it, but it, there's been the benefit of time, too, to maybe, you know, catch any remaining gaps. And I thought this would be a good time to just remind everybody of the committee website, their, the website link for the committees, too, that it kind of all developed at the same time, these procedures, along with the, the website posting of our committees. It includes a description of each committee, the, the meeting schedule, and, and other such matters, so.
Which is reminded to you, if, there's actually an event calendar on that particular website. We've been pretty good working with Ms. Talentino and some of the other members to get those dates on there, but if you change your date or anything, you need to get that to us so we can make sure. We've been getting it posted on the outside board, but that's kind of old-fashioned, even though it's still required under the Freedom of Information Act, so we want to make sure that webpage gets updated. So if you do change your meetings, you need to let us know so we can get that up there. We're trying to keep up with it, but we don't always catch every single one of them right now. If there's no further questions on the new proposed Appendix C, the next one up is Policy 437. This would be re-titled Retirement Plans Benefits Insurance. This has been significantly reworked, and not necessarily different, but it has better explanations as to what your retirement plans are, what the difference between full-time and part-time and temporary employees are. And again, there have been significant changes in the last five, seven years about some of the retirement plans that are available to the Virginia Retirement System. It also talks about the various benefits packages you have, and I'm not going to go into this because this is very significant. If you haven't read it, I believe it is a very good explanation as to the benefits that you offer, the insurance programs that you offer available to your employees, and I think it sets it out in a little bit clearer terms than we've seen. So there's this significant amount of work done by Human Resources and the Benefits Office to make sure we got this information clear for employees, we consolidated, make sure it was all into one policy. It's a very long policy. For the most part, it isn't new, it's just better organized and explaining it to individuals. So if you're looking for one area to go through, your benefits and insurance program, that's what this policy is doing for you. Do you have specific questions about these policies? Otherwise, if you haven't read it strongly, I encourage you to read it because it's a very good explanation for your employees what's available to them. There are no questions on proposed policy amendments to 437. I will move on to Policy 541, which has to do with the dress and grooming codes. If you remember from the General, 2020 General Assembly, they, the General Assembly passed a requirement that the Virginia Department of Education would have to put out model guidelines for what dress policies were going to be. Within those dress policies, there were certain requirements that the General Assembly was requesting that we make. One, they had to be gender-neutral procedures that were evenly passed between, or didn't have a disparate impact on any particular gender. They also had to have rules on ethnic hairstyles and headpieces, also having to do with the ability to wear religious garb or religious headpieces. They also had to have rules that had to explain what a staff member could do or not do. Staff members not allowed to put their hands on a student to remove clothing, they cannot make a student undress. Not, that's the things that we had an issue with in our school division, but this was a concern enough at the General Assembly. So a bunch of these rules had to be incorporated on this. We did a lot of work on this policy. Again, what Virginia Department of Education put out, typical for the Virginia Department of Education, wasn't really a policy. It was a bunch of guidelines, and we had to figure out how to incorporate all this. I had mentioned this to the Policy Review Committee, and I brought them what I thought was a first draft, and it looked like the draconian dress codes that I grew up with, very long and very complicated, incorporating the new procedures. And we wanted the Policy Committee to look at it and say, please know that this is coming. These are going to be some big changes. Then Mr. Sutton arranged for a bunch of committee meetings that we had. One of our meetings was with students. This actually was a pretty fascinating meeting, listening to your students work in, that they had very interesting ideas about dress codes, and I will tell you, I actually did a 180 on my thinking on dress codes. It took me a long time to come around, but their thoughts were really interesting about it, and they very strongly felt like, please don't focus so much on the details and the clothes. It's more important for us to get to school. We understand what's appropriate. Don't assume that we don't know how to dress for the business world. Don't assume that everything we're doing is to violate a rule. Please focus on allowing us to get to school and be comfortable. Interesting conversations with some of the students about, please understand that I may not have the money to buy these clothes that other people have. I may not be able to afford some of these clothing requirements that other people have. I want to be able to comfortable in what I wear. Believe it or not, our biggest argument, students, were leggings and hoodies, and then one very long conversation about whether girls could show their shoulders or not. So take a look at that section on there. We next had a meeting with teachers. Teachers also were really fascinating conversations about this, and what was most interesting to me about teachers is they say, please don't make us the police on the nitpicky air shoes. We want to educate our kids. We don't want, the first thing we say to them is, you know, change your clothes, I need to write you up on this. Let us focus on the kids. We know when it's inappropriate and distracting, but these little details and having them writing up is, we're just interfering with our ability to get our kids educated, and there's so much we need to worry about. And I thought that was a really interesting conversation. We then had a meeting with principals. Wow, principals were all over the place on this, very interesting ideas on them. Some were very important about how important it was for kids to understand how to dress appropriately for the real world and not be distracting. One principal had a really interesting comment, where she said, I don't want the first thing a kid hears when they walk into my school is, take that off, you're not dressed appropriately. And now, and if I have to do that when they walk in the door, how does that make them feel when they come to school? I don't want to be that person. So we want, what they wanted was some flexibility at the schools with the principals to deal with that. So some of these ideas that we have in here came out of some of this conversation, has given them a little bit of flexibility. This is, looks a lot different from a dress code that you've seen in other places on there. We were very specific about it in going to them. We define dress codes in here. We've also defined dress codes to include grooming. So hairstyles can now be in this, pieces of jewelry, things that you wear in your hair, head coverings, because that is something that is required by the Virginia Department of Education on there. But some of the other things that we might have focused on before, we don't focus on so much on there about clothing, particular things. Basically, we're defining what has to be covered, and I'm going to do a rough explanation to you. It's basically to be from here, which is from shoulder width, shoulder width, down to about five inches below the groin area. We felt that that was the most important thing to get covered on there and not worry about some of the other details that you might have seen in more specific dress codes. This will require a lot of thinking on your part to look at it. Dr. Spence challenged the executive leadership team several months ago to start thinking differently about education. This is just about the time we were doing the dress codes, and we really spent a lot of time thinking about this and working with those. I, myself, had to do a lot of thinking, because if you go up in there when I did, where girls couldn't wear pants to school, you know, we're a slightly different era than we were, you know? So it took me a long time to come around to this. I encourage you to take a look at the details on here and think differently. I, I really found that these committees that we work with were very thoughtful about, is this that important? Is what's most important to get our kids educated and comfortable and be safe? So I encouraged you to look through some of these, have some interesting conversations on it. Some of the issues are hard, they're just difficult for us to look at and how to define them, and we did the best we could in coming up with what we thought was an appropriate recommendation. We built in procedures, which I thought was important, if you need accommodation. I maybe can't wear something because I have a medical condition, so how do I get exemption around that? Or if you ran into a student in the hallway and the administrator disagreed with what the student was wearing. What we wanted to do is cut down on the immediate confrontations. How do we solve the problem at the moment? We put some options in there, let's get this resolved. If we can, keep the student in the educational environment and find a way to resolve it. So we tried to build in some procedures in there to help the administrators deal with that, but the goal is keep the student in the educational environment as long as possible. So again, if you haven't looked at a detail, really look at detail, and you may have to let go of some of your preconceived ideas and think about, you know, what is really, really important here. And again, if you have ideas, you'd like to discuss this, you know, I think this is a really good time to do that. If you haven't looked at it, please look at it in the next couple of weeks, because this is going to be an important change for us in how the schools are going to implement the dress codes. With all that being said, can I answer any questions or help you discuss this issue any further?
Ms. Owens, then Mrs. Manning.
Great, thank you. I'm really happy to see that the focus on dress code has been pulled back to, are they present? Are they covered enough that it's not a distraction? Can we get to the learning? I appreciate that that's the focus. There was a mention about allowing more flexibility or some flexibility for principals, and I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about what that flexibility entails and what the mindset that I'm wondering, is the flexibility creating differences in how things are being enforced from one school to another? And so I just want to understand what, what we're talking about.
Well, the way, we kind of wrote it the opposite way. Here are the basics you have to get cover on this, and if you can show that some form of dress or clothing is disrupting the educational environment, that might be able to do it or creates a danger or a safety issue, that's where you would get some flexibility in it on there. So again, it's not, it's not so much saying, these are things you have to wear, these are the, what it's saying is, these are the basic things that have to be in place on there. And so after that, it will be, come up to the pencils, we'll have to draft their dress codes to be compliant with this. So again, it's almost the opposite of what you're saying.
Kind of has, can I just answer that? Look at D, enforcement, and, and that's where it's left up the administration, basically spells that out.
And, I mean, I guess, again, my, my question and hope is that if it, I mean, I would be concerned about things being enforced different at different schools. We, we've seen how differences in enforcement have created disparities when we're looking at our discipline policies, and so I just want to make sure that while we're looking at these flexibilities and, you know, principals then drafting their own dress code after we just had PRC draft one, I mean, I can understand if it's like, okay, you have chemistry lab today, chemistry lab dress code is going to be a little bit different than whatever else.
So can I try to address that for you a little bit? So what I'll tell you, having been a principal for many years, it's already happening, what you're talking about, right? So there's already discretion that's applied, and it was, it was actually implied in the previous policy. If you look at the last page of the, the policy where there was things stricken, for example, it says, you know, dress standards shall be set by principals, so not necessarily consistent across the division, right? As, as an example. Decisions regarding the appropriateness of clothing, footwear, and accessories will be made by the principal or a designee. That's language that was stricken, but that's indicating similar levels of flexibility. I think we're more of the reasonableness and flexibility that comes into play that I, that I understand and you're rightfully concerned about and we have to pay attention to, but is when it said, you know, items initially deemed inappropriate may be brought to the students or the parents' attention for corrective action. That still basically exists, that's, there's some flexibility to do that, but then the next part of it, which has been stricken, was that subsequent violations will subject the students to suspension from school. So there wasn't any flexibility there. It was like, boom, you're out. And so I think the language here is, in enforcement, is that it's intended to provide every opportunity to keep the child in school and address the behavior. So hopefully, a push in the right direction relative to making sure that students are in school as much as, as possible. There are, there are any number of things in here that do then talk about making sure that it's consistent with other policies, that it's that it's consistent with other policies, that it's discreet, gender neutral in implementation. So you're not doing something different for girls than you would with boys relative to like, you know, how you, I mean, because that, we hear that all the time, right? So if you ever talk to girls, they'll tell you, we are way overrepresented in the dress code compared to boys. And so the idea being, we need to get around to making sure that what's appropriate attire is appropriate attire and not being overly punitive for dress that girls might typically wear and, 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 and then if you look in there, enforcement should include options for reasonable remediation that demonstrates respect and where possible minimizes the loss of instructional time. So I think it's guiding principals to make decisions that are a little bit more reasonable.
Okay, that, that is helpful and obviously we do need some levels of flexibility, especially given that some of our programs require some different things. If your child is in elementary school at school A, they may wear regular attire to school and if your child attends at C-Tech, they're going to be required to wear the school uniform. And so obviously, we're not going to enforce it the same across the board per se. Those students aren't going to be suspended for showing up in, in shorts. And I'm sure the same with maybe the business academy programs are, that they're going to have some flexibility needs. But I, I just want to make sure that it stays on the forefront of our mind, that we want to be mindful to make these changes really effective, the way we, we would hope to, to have them play out, which is to decrease the, the discipline actions that remove children from learning opportunities for dress code. Thank you.
And maybe useful to know, there is an accompanying regulation that does spell out dress and grooming standards.
No, actually, we combined them at the request of the Policy Review Committee. We combined them all into the policy. We took what was, used to be in the regulation and it combined it. So there's one policy. Now the Policy Review Committee asked us all to be put together.
So where are these dress and grooming standards now in the, in the latest version?
Section, it's section B of the policy, right?
B, pretty much, although I'm looking at two number Bs.
Actually, it should be C, yeah.
Yeah, I think I need to fix the numbering on that. Yeah, B and C, it should be standards and modifications, accommodations. Then there's dress, dress and grooming standards. And it goes down through the subtitles on there would be, talks about dress grooming, then opaque clothing, what has to be covered. And then goes what you can't wear and what type of images and symbols on there. And then the rest after that has to do with disputes.
Okay, I apologize, but the, the point being that it is the same set of standards that, that applies to all the schools. That was the point I was trying to make. And so when we say enforcement is the responsibility, we're just saying that that is the designated person in each high school, the principal, to, to enforce these standards. Again, given that it's not going to, even within schools, sometimes it's going to be case by case, but, okay.
It's a lot to take in. There's a lot of things that have not been spelled out before. There were new requirements. It's, now's a good time to look at it. We had some long discussions on how long you had to go. We changed some of the inches on that and some of the coverage on that. So there's still time to change some of these things. You want to look at it, but spend some time looking at it, because it's, it's pretty complicated. Interesting, it's a different change and you are going to have to spend a little bit of time thinking about it. All right, there are no further questions on that?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So first of all, everybody that put time and effort into this, I think it was very well done document, very well thought out. I'm very pleased with it overall. I, I just had a few things that I'd like to throw out there, because there were a couple of things I didn't quite understand and I just want to make sure that it's clear for the public as well. So on B1, it talks about dress and grooming code means. And then it says jewelry, makeup, body art, electronic, comma, communication, comma, recording, comma, photographing devices. I don't, I don't understand what that means.
If you're wearing your, there are earbuds in there or you have something to hook around your head, that was an ongoing concern or things that are electronic that could be recording devices. Yeah, there's all kinds of things that we're trying to get. And it might be, I could spell it, punctuation could be a little bit better here possibly. But that seems to be an issue a lot of times. You know, if you've got a lot of hair like I do, you could cover up something, electronic devices on there. You could wear glasses that have recording devices. So those might become disruptive. So that's what we were trying to get at.
Okay, so it's just basically saying that these are issues that a principal could say, that's a violation? You can't wear headphones in your ears?
Yes.
That's kind of what that's saying, okay. And then on the topic, on, on B2, where you explained that it was from under the armpits to below the groin area. So I'm imagining that means that halters could be worn without straps?
Here's what got, and let me go where, and this is where the students got me on this one. This was interesting, because this was a very long conversation about a student who said she'd never been troubled in life and wore a strapless top. It's a long discussion. And then I, and then I said to her, well, I think, hon, the concern was that if you're wearing something without, your bra strap's going to go out. And she said, well, how can you do that? Because your new gender require, your gender neutral requirements on there, if you're saying that I can't have, I have to have a bra or something covering, then it has to be equal to the men on there. And that, that caught me on there. And I did realize with the new requirements on gender neutrality, how was I going to prevent them saying that?
Yeah, I'm not worried about the straps. I'm worried about it, it falling down. That's, I guess that's my concern. It, it could easily fall down and then that becomes a problem.
And that's something you can certainly work on the language with you on.
Yeah, maybe, maybe something that it can't be strapless, maybe? Like it would need to have straps so that it could stay up? I, I don't know.
If you want to talk somewhere about that, Ms. Manning, we can, I can tell you.
Yeah, I mean, if the Policy Committee wants to talk about that, I mean, you know, I don't know if you've had those conversations, but something that I'd like to throw out there. And then it talks, it uses the word opaque a lot. And I know, not everybody may understand what opaque is. So if maybe if we define what opaque is in the beginning, you know, not see-through or, or define what opaque is, I would, I think that would be good. And then in C, item C, item C1 and item C3 are, are similar. It talks about the disputes and temporary resolution. And it says, dress code, grooming code provided to students and families will detail how an infraction will be temporarily, temporarily resolved if a student disagrees with the school administrator's determination. Shouldn't that be if the parent agrees, disagrees? I mean, wouldn't that be a parent issue?
That's possible, that's a possible thing. I'm anticipating the administrator talking to the kid in the school. I don't know that you would necessarily immediately have the parent getting it. My goal was, how do we stop the situation here? We could expand it out to a family member, but then I'm going to have to think about, you know, how long do I have to call? You know, do I just sit the student in the hallway while you call the mother to find out what to do with it? I guess my goal was, how do we solve the situation temporarily? And then you can go home and talk to your family and figure out what's going on. So I think that's where we were trying to get with this section, but if you think we could spell it out differently, we can work on that.
Yeah, there was another one, C3, it kind of said the same thing. Students who believe that a dress or grooming code standard is unfairly inequitable. I mean, maybe even put student slash parent legal guardian and, and maybe combine them. You know, certainly don't want to see the parent legal guardian be, be left out of the conversation on that. So, but again, thank you to the Policy Committee and everybody, staff and everybody that contributed. I think it was, you know, this is never going to be perfect, but I think it was very well done.
Okay, just adding on to what Ms. Manning said, I don't want to sound too prudish, but what happens, I mean, I'm just thinking back when I was in high school. I mean, boys would come up and pull, I mean, if they didn't have straps, they'd just pull your shirt down or, you know, do something silly. I, I don't, I'm just, I'm just saying that that is a possibility. What, what happens in those type of situations? Because I just, I'm just thinking of, I, I don't know. And it's been a long time since I've been in school and, but I have, I have a daughter that, you know, I had in high school. I'm just thinking, if, if that would happen, and I've realized that she's the one that is choosing to wear that, but I'm just thinking, what in the world happens? And again, I'm, I'm just being a, you know, mother here right now. But what, what happens if someone would inadvertently do something horrendous like that and then, you know, she's exposed, embarrassed? You know, we have social media. I, I don't know. I'm just, maybe I'm overthinking this, but I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned about something, you know, happening to that, that child that, you know, would then be, she'd be, you know, embarrassed for, for a very long time. So I don't know.
And that could be suggestive if you want to identify a way that it has to be secured, that it can't be pulled down.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, Jessica, you had a reaction, so do you want to say something?
Yes, thank you. And while I think it is important to have clothes that are appropriately secure for, for whatever is going on, like I mentioned, you might need something different to do chem labs, that your toes are covered and whatever. I don't, I definitely don't want to get caught up in, I don't want to call it the weeds, the weeds of somebody inadvertently pulling down their clothes. That's, what if your child got sexually assaulted in school? If we walked down the hall and somebody pulled my clothing down and exposed myself, then we need to handle and address that behavior from that male or female student and not say, oh, you should have wore a better shirt so that they didn't pull your shirt down, Jessica. I don't want us to.
I, I agree with that. I just, and then that's why I'm saying, maybe I'm overthinking this. I just want to be sure that we are creating policy that is also careful to ensure that, that, and I know we can't ever do that. And again, maybe I'm just being an overthinking mom here, but I just, I, I want to make sure that we're protective of, of things potentially happening as well.
And I think it is a mind shift a little bit. And that certainly, parents who don't feel comfortable with their child wearing something strapless should parent and say, nope, we don't wear strapless things to school in my house. These are the clothes that you're allowed to wear. And other parents who feel comfortable with, I'm wearing a strapless top and I have a sweater on and I have it that way most of the day and third block I got hot, I took it off for a little bit and then I put it back on, that that's okay too. And it's not something that we are nitpicking at the school board level or trying to send kids home for or calling parents and disrupting their workday for. So if we could focus more on behaviors than clothes, I, I would love that to be the direction. And I think that this dress code starts that, starts focusing more on the behaviors than the clothing themselves, for me.
Right. Okay, Mrs. Anderson, then Mrs. Hughes.
So I, I feel that if you said strapless attire is not acceptable or attire is not, that's definitely gender neutral for either one, you know? Boys couldn't wear strapless, girls wouldn't wear strapless. We don't, we're not designating that it has to be three fingers or anything like that. We're just saying that strapless attire is not acceptable and, you know? I, I agree that there are kids who just want to be funny. And so somebody's wearing a strapless outfit and somebody's just really trying to be funny. I mean, it happened in my day and time, to tell you the truth. It's.
All right, Mrs. Hughes.
Yeah, I don't think we need strapless clothes in school. I, I do agree with Ms. Owens, if somebody is pulling somebody's clothes down, that's a behavior that needs to be addressed. And I have, I saw when I went to school too, people who, you know, thought that was funny. There, I'm sure there are still people who would think that was funny. It's also possible in a crowded hall where people are shoulder to shoulder, that it gets caught on something and just happens. I don't think we need strapless stuff in school. And, you know, to say, if, you know, be a parent, if you're okay with it, that's fine. If you're not okay with it, that's fine. But also giving a dress code, and I'm okay with easing up on some of the dress code. This is clearly not as stringent as a dress code I had when I was growing up. But I do agree, we, we need to be focusing more on behaviors in education than we do dress codes. However, things like this can be distracting, can lead to accidents. And part of being a parent is saying, these are the rules and this is what we need to do. So enforcing that before they go out to the door is actually part of your job. I think strapless is an accident waiting to happen. And I agree with Ms. Anderson that it is gender neutral. Nobody needs to wear anything strapless to school.
So, Mrs. Malina. So I gauge a lot of things by Kami. And I think to circle back around to the beginning of this conversation, that Kami, you said, your thought process is completely different now. And I think as a board, we just need to not overthink this. Things, things do happen. I think individual behavior needs to be dealt with, but the kids spoke, the, the students spoke, the administrators spoke, and they said, please, just stop. Just let us go to school. And I think the most telling statement came from a high school administrator who said, I'm not going to be that person that stops a kid before they even walk in the building and the day is ruined before it even starts. And so I think we could sit here until tomorrow and come up with 100 different things that could happen. And I think we need to just trust our kids to get dressed just for school, to go to school, to learn. And if there are individual problems that arise, I think it will, it, it, it will be dealt with. And I, I just don't, I just can't, I just can't sit here and think of a thousand different things that could happen every day. I just don't think it's going to happen. And I, and I think, I don't think anyone is looking, I just don't. And, and I have a daughter who would have, you know, loved to have just gone to school in what she wanted to go in and nobody cared. And that's where I'm going to leave it.
What I can do is take some of these comments you have and see if I can rework some of the stuff and send it out to you. And again, we're welcome. And I will tell you, you really have to think, think differently, what's important, what's not important, which is fine. I can talk about securing tops and can find a way to secure tops and some of the other things. And I'll try to get some definitions in here for you, but please, please read through it. Welcome to change. This is a big learning experience for a lot of us to try to figure out how to define a dress code that more appropriately reflects where we are in 2021 than maybe we were in the 1970s where some of us went to school.
Thank you.
Again, please feel free to send your suggestions in. I think my next one is 631. This is a policy 631 because of the instruction section. This comes to us in the gifted programs. Not a lot of changes in here, which you'll see is they're removing the designation and asking for, instead of being gifted and talented students, they're referring to them as gift, the gifted program, removing the talented section, and we just call them gifted learners. So they're not going to be differentiating any more between talented and gifted. And that's just a recommendation that came out of teaching and learning and those were the only real changes to this particular policy. Are there any questions on this one? 641 is on computer literacy. Again, we kind of got back and had discussion whether computers even the right term anymore. So now recommendation would be to change the title on policy 641 to digital literacy. It will now read digital, digital literacy includes, but is not limited to, knowledge of and experience with computers and technology involving drill, tutorial or simulation lessons and problem solving. The term also includes awareness, the potential that technology has a future, has for the future, for jobs and for everyday living. And again, replacing the word computers with technology, because we realize this, this area developed so quickly that we can't necessarily name every device. So that is a recommendation coming out, again, out of teaching and learning for the appropriate terminology. Are there any further questions on these policies? Again, if you think questions, please feel free to contact me or member the Policy Review Committee and we'll be working on them before we bring them back to you next time.
Thank you, Mrs. Linetti. All right, information, item F is a proposed resolution for mask face coverings, not required for outdoor activities. Ms., Mrs. Hughes, if you would care to weigh in here?
Did you want me to read it or just discuss it?
I think that would be a good idea to start. No, this is information.
Whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is committed to the physical safety and emotional well-being of all students and staff, as well as being committed to providing the least restrictive environment for all students. And whereas the Center for Disease Control Guidelines do not call for masking outdoors. And whereas 19 states have lifted all mask mandates with no increase in COVID numbers and at least four more states will lift them by the end of May 2021. And whereas the governor of Virginia has lifted the mask mandate, accepting those inside of school buildings and traveling on public transportation. And whereas the governor of Virginia is scheduled to lift all COVID mitigation mandates on May 28, 2021, now therefore be it resolved that mask coverings, I'm sorry, mask or face covering. now therefore be it resolved that mask coverings, I'm sorry, mask or face coverings shall be optional during all outdoors activities, including but not limited to recess, PE, athletic contests, meets, matches, games, practice for athletics, and marching band, and that masks and face coverings will be optional for students, staff, and guests at the graduation ceremonies for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, which are being held outdoors and after all mandates will have been lifted. Be it further resolved that it will not be the policy of Virginia Beach City Public Schools to either encourage or discourage any student or staff member to wear a mask when outdoors.
Thank you. I may, may I offer as a potential place to start with staff here is to address each of these individually with what the present practice is?
Sure, we can, we can do that. So the, let me get them. I'm just going to take the, the two resolved pieces, correct? So mask and face covering shall be optional during all outdoor activities, including an element of recess physical, physical education. We've already made that clear, that they can be lowered at recess and during physical education outdoors. Athletic contests, meets, matches, games, practices for students in marching band. That's already been the case for students participating in those. The question has been for sideline and for adult visitor attenders, you know, parents and, and folks who are at those events. And you noted earlier this afternoon, we've sent out guidance, which is based on the EO 79, which is the governor's executive order 79 that comes out. It was, it's come out, but it's not effective until Friday. And indicating that effective Friday, VBCPS will not require anyone who is fully vaccinated for COVID-19 to wear a face covering while attending outdoor sporting events or other outdoor events. And we'll clarify too, that it is other outdoor events, and while attending outdoor graduations. We're also upping the limit of tickets for graduations, so we're clarifying that, but that goes into effect Friday based on EO 79, which actually then I guess addresses the second one as well. Marching band is still covered under EO 79 and EO 72, just as it is, any exceptions for performance are covered under there with an exception, and it says that they can be relaxed at 10 feet, and so we've been doing that for some time. And then just a reminder, because I know there's been calls for us to, you know, ignore the exec, the executive orders and just let anybody wear masks or not wear masks in our schools. We can't. There is an executive order in place that requires that indoors, on school building, on school property, all adults and students continue to wear masks. That is extended by executive order 79. It's not lifted. That continues to be in place with executive order 79. Now, it's my understanding from the state superintendent, the intention there is through the remainder of the school year. Y'all probably know the emergency order is going to end on June 30th, and then what the governor will do next is up, up in the air, but I think the intention here is through the end of this school year, and then we'll have to make some decisions over the summer with you all about what the guidance says next. But currently, under the executive order, the board doesn't have the authority to just ignore the executive order, and it does say very clearly and specifically that masks are continued to be required indoors in school buildings. So we've communicated that to our principals as well.
May I just respond?
Yes.
So I did not include anything about indoors or on buses because I, I knew that that was a mandate, and that wasn't something that was in our control. And part of the reason, a large part of the reason that I wrote this was, at the time, graduation was not included, but we have also heard from some parents that this has been kind of enforced unequally amongst different groups of students. But if this is what our policy is anyway, then nobody should have any heartburn voting for it because it will just be codified in writing what we're already doing. And so if it's being enforced unequally, then this document states that they need to stop doing that, that it does need to be enforced equally.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson, then Mrs. Manning.
I don't see any need for this. If a principal's not enforcing what the superintendent sends out as the guidelines, then the superintendent will speak to the principal about that. This is already being taken care of. This is an unnecessary resolution, basically a mandate that we're requiring our superintendent to do, and I think this is the wrong thing to do right now. He has already, this is totally unnecessary, and I'm not going to support it because this was just, it's not, it's not a necessary resolution that we need to be doing.
Mrs. Manning, then Mrs. Riggs.
Yeah, so I would just like to clarify, I was not aware that our students who are outside for PE can take off their masks without any restrictions. I thought they still had restrictions to maintain socially distance and be socially distanced. We've had parents who've complained about that.
We, we communicated that last week when executive order 72 came out, and we worked our way through that for a couple days. The, the restriction remains indoors, so that they can relax. We've allowed them to relax their mask during physical education indoors, but they have to maintain six feet of social distancing. Outdoors, there isn't a social distancing requirement.
So no masks required at all outdoors in option?
During physical activity, correct.
So, so item one here, that applies, it's codified right now? Item one, all of these things?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then item two, it's my understanding from what I've read that it's not optional for students at the graduation ceremonies because students have not, it, it's, it's based upon vaccination status, and not all students have had the opportunity to get the vaccine. Is that correct?
All students have not been given the opportunity to get the vaccine. The guidance that went out this afternoon, and that will be going out to the rest of our families on Thursday, this went out to senior families today, is that VBCPS will not require anyone who is fully vaccinated to wear a face covering while attending outdoor graduation. So that would apply to students who are fully vaccinated.
What if they have COVID antibodies and, you know, had COVID a month ago, and they?
None of that's addressed in any guidance that we have. So what's addressed in the guidance that we have from both the CDC, the governor's executive order, and the VDOE relative to this is that anyone who is fully vaccinated can, can remove their mask. Anybody who's not been vaccinated should continue to wear a mask. That guidance is crystal clear right now for us. But that would apply to students who are fully vaccinated.
Mrs. Riggs, then Mrs. Williams.
Thank you.
I just wanted to agree with what Ms. Anderson said. I think that, I don't think we need a resolution stating this because we have put out, sent out this information by media and communications to all families and to all principals, and we have given that job to our superintendent to make sure this is being done in all the schools and by all principals. And if it is not, and it happens, then they will be, this will be acted upon, like it had, like things that have not been followed by rules all year. When, when it was reported, we do know, because we've been told by our superintendent or by someone in his administration, that it was handled. And we were, you know, we were given that information that it was specifically. So I think that to put a resolution is kind of like, we wanted to make sure that our superintendent's going to do his job. And I, I truly believe that we, he is doing his job, and he will continue to do it. I agree with a lot of these things about the mask, because I'm ready to take it off, and I'm ready for our kids to, too. But being a public entity, we have to follow what the state codes and the governor has told us to do. We don't have the opportunity to, to not follow it because, like private schools do. We are a public entity. We have to follow the laws. And so therefore, we just can't say, okay, we're going to not do this anymore. I really wish we could. I, I get it. But that, and that's, that's the reasoning I give to people when they talk to me about it, and there is, you know, they're very upset about it. I have family members that will not wear it and do not agree with it, and are on the same page as the people we're getting emails from and speakers. But the point is, we are a public entity and have to follow the law. And until that law is, is altered or edited accordingly, then I think it should be given to, like we have been doing, given to our, our superintendent to handle. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams.
I think this is an obvious question, Dr. Spence, but if you, you can, you're allowed not to wear a mask if you've been fully vaccinated at graduation, both for adults and students. So obviously, we're just going to use the honesty method because you can't.
Yeah, but, well, we, we are allowed to ask, but we're not allowed to require that they tell us. So that's the clarification we've been given from the Department of Education, and I think that's also in the governor's FAQs on the executive orders. So obviously, we won't know, right? You know, to the point, it's an honor system, and we're going to have a lot of people in, in a small place, and there continues to be guidance. Because what the executive order says, continue outdoors to follow the CDC guidance on outdoor masking based on vaccination status. It's a specific one, yeah. And so, you know, we're just going to have to trust that people do, do, do the right thing. We are going to maintain a little bit of distance between groups. So we're going to mark six seats for a graduate, and then there'll be a three feet distance between the next group, so that there's at least some of that, and there's been some discussion about areas for folks who are uncomfortable, now don't want to be around people who aren't wearing masks, and providing some space for that as well. So we're working through the details of that, because we understand there are still going to be people who are not comfortable with that, but would like to attend graduation. You know, we do have to rely on people being honest about their vaccination status, but we can't, ultimately, at the end of the day, if they say, well, I'm vaccinated and I'm not wearing a mask, there's nothing we can do about that.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for making all those accommodations for graduation, Dr. Robertson.
Jack, did you, or Dawn, did you, either of you want to add anything to that? Did I generally cover it?
So I, I sent a message to the principals today and clarified with them that we've been on a long and arduous journey since March 2020, and we are three weeks away. The language that you see in the information that went out today is straight out of executive order 79 that goes into effect Friday. I think we need to think about the schools, the staff, the students, the families. People are still on different sides in terms of the face coverings, but let's just get right down to it with schools. We have three weeks left with graduation ceremonies. We have students that are getting vaccinated in their high schools. We're, we've had about 125 roughly at each of our high schools so far, so that's probably a really small percentage, maybe 15% of the students that are showing up. Even those that will get their second dose the week before graduations, they still are going to have to wear a face covering at graduation because it's fully vaccinated, two weeks past fully vaccinated, so every graduate, and so it's important to anybody listening, every graduate's going to have to wear a face covering if they got their vaccination through the school system. If they got their vaccination privately and they have that two-week barrier, well, then they would have the opportunity, according to the language, to not wear their face covering. So as a result of our mitigation strategies, we had our third day in the last two weeks where Mary Shaw's report to me today was zero. Zero cases. This is the third time in two weeks that it's been a zero. You guys received the information. You can see the numbers coming in. We, we are, we are right there. We are right at the end. My, my suggestion and, and to you is we stay the course. We, we recognize that that's not going to make everybody happy, but we stay the course. We are following the guidelines. We've done that the entire time, which is why we used the bad word. We pivoted last week and, and allowed for, for not having to wear a face covering outside when you're at PE or recess because you're exercising, because that was a result of executive order 72. We've now pivoted again based on executive order 79. It goes into effect Friday. So I, I would just encourage you to consider the impact of the thousands of students and staff that are in schools, and anytime we introduce a change, we get to the issue that you dealt with earlier, and that is inconsistency in implementation. So that's the only thing I would add.
Any other comments or questions before we submit this to a vote? Oh, I'm sorry, this is information. Okay. Thank you, staff and, and everybody for your questions. Okay. I'm sorry, Mrs. Hughes, did you care to comment again?
Yeah, just, I'm, I'm trying to understand why marching band is not considered exercise. I mean, you would consider walking around a track exercise, but as they march and play instruments out in the heat, that's not exercise?
Yeah, so that's not our interpretation, and I, 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 that's a conundrum that I cannot explain. That is, so those students have to follow another set of guidelines, not this set. So that is not us. That is a different set of guidelines for those students. There, there are a lot of things that we could say don't make a lot of sense. Like you can wrestle somebody, but you can't shake their hand in a match. So, Miss Hughes, I'm with you, but we, this, we're following what's.
Yeah, the exception is, the exception, I mean, just, it's, it's absolutely clear. Any person who is playing a musical instrument or wearing a mask would inhibit the playing of the instrument so long as at least 10 feet of physical distance can be maintained from other persons, whether the rehearsal or performance is indoors or outdoors. So that's just the guidance we have in the executive order. So, you know, again, we've been talking about performing arts all year, trying to find ways to make performing arts better for our kids because we know how difficult that stuff is with masks, and, you know, Jack could attest to. I've been pushing hard to find ways to, to not have to do some of the things that we have to do, but, and as a former member of a marching band, I, I get it. It's, that's tough.
Well, and sitting and playing an instrument, which I could see this applying to, is not the same as marching.
Yeah, unfortunately, they're playing an instrument and it's outdoors and it's covered. And, you know, we, listen, and I'm going to be clear, I mean, I, I get it. Like all the people who are calling me and emailing me and emailing you and want masks, I'm ready to ditch the masks too, quite frankly, you know. But my job as the administrator of this school division is to make sure we're following the governor's orders here and make sure that we're in line with policy, and that's what I'm trying to do. I'm not, like, I don't love wearing this thing all day, every day, and I don't love that my kids have to wear it all day, every day. But right now, the determination is that's what's keeping us safe inside our buildings. That's what we're hearing from the governor. That's what we're going to do. If that gets lifted, I'll be first in line to tell you, we're going to put out the, the thing that says we don't have to do it anymore. I mean, the one thing I think we could say is, we've been really consistent with this. We're going to stick to the guidance that we get on, on masking, and we're going to, we're just staying with that.
All right. So now, final information, item 13G. Another proposed resolution, which we all have in hand. And shall we start with the read?
Okay. Thank you, Chair Ryan. Let me just say briefly, let me make it very clear to my colleagues and the public and our employees that what this resolution is not, and it is not a replacement for our equity policy. Let me say that again. It is not meant, nor does it imply anywhere. It is not a replacement to the equity policy. So I'm going to read it now, and then I'll provide, provide some context. I apologize to the public that you cannot see it, but when things are obviously added the day of, our clerk obviously didn't know to make, you know, a slide for it, so I'm going to read it.
Actually, Ms. Williams, yours I did have. I do have a slide, so I will put it up.
You are wonderful. Thank you so much. Yeah, I mailed this out, I think, last. You are wonderful. Thank you so much. Yeah, I mailed this out, I think, last Tuesday, so. Yeah, we've got it. So, oh, excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Regina. I appreciate that. Okay, resolution to clarify equity training and teaching. Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, values diversity, promotes inclusiveness, and is committed to providing a learning environment whereby all students have access and opportunities to benefit from high standards, support and resources required for a high-quality education. And whereas the School Board values the uniqueness of each member of its staff, student population and community, and encourages individual and multiple perspectives. And whereas the School Board must provide a clear and transparent understanding of the school division's positions and expectations regarding equity training, teaching and learning, and must bring clarity to the differences between what the school division promotes with culturally responsive practices and what the school division does not promote, such as critical race theory. And whereas the School Board recognizes that individual and group perspectives on equity may differ and are subject to constitutional and other protections. Accordingly, the School Board acknowledges that it cannot limit or discourage employees from researching, discussing, or exploring books, media, publications, or materials related to critical race theory on their own personal time and own own expense. Now for now, therefore, be it resolved that one, any school, school-based program, activity or entity that is operated, controlled, paid paid for, or under the jurisdiction of the School Board shall refrain from training, teaching, or promoting the following to students and employees. A, that any race is inherently superior or inferior to any other race. B, that any individual by virtue of his or her race or skin color is inherently racist, privileged, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. C, that any individual by virtue of his or her race or skin color bears responsibility for the actions committed by other members of his or her race, skin color, or religion. D, an individual's moral character is worth or worth is determined by his or her ra is is determined by his or her race or skin color. E, that the United States is fundamentally or systematically racist country while understanding that racism does still exist. F, that capitalism is racist, and G, critical race theory. And two, that any misalignment of the above mentioned be reported to the superintendent or designated through applicable policies, regulations, and procedures for resolving complaints by parents, students, or staff. And individuals reporting any alleged misalignment will not be retaliated against. So simply, the reason why I think that this resolution is so important because we have continuous training, we have for years, and we're going to do it forever. And there's a lot of confusion in some of the training that we have seen lately. Um, a gentleman, Mr. Mackowitz, Mackowitz emailed us in March with a suggestion to do a resolution. I don't know the gentleman, but I did email him back and thanked him and told him I was using it as a framework. So um his resolution is, if you remember, if you want to look back, had some of the um, some of the um parts here, but I, it doesn't have all of it. I added a bunch. I deleted a stu stuff, so it was just a framework. Um, I asked Ms. Franklin if she wanted to help me and what she did, and I'm so grateful for that because she and I have had much, many discussions on this topic. We have talked with our employees. We have talked with parents. We have talked to administrators. We've talked with each other. We've done a lot of research. We've met with Dr. Spence and Dr. Parent. And we just felt that it was very important to clarify, to give direction to our employees and our community so that they know what we expect and what we teach. Um, we have heard over and over again for almost a year, we do not do critical race theory here in Virginia Beach. We don't do it because we do cri um culturally responsive practices. Well, for me, and I suspect many of our employees and our community members, the difference between CRT, CRP, culturally relevant training, equity training, et cetera, can be very blurred. And I believe there's a lot of overlap and a lot of experts in the field also say that there's overlap. But when I look at our equity policy, our culturally responsive practices, our SEL, and some of our great programs such as the African-American sum summit, male summit, Beach Girls Rock, Black History Initiative, Diversity Ambassadors, Making Waves Mentoring Program, our emphasis on special education, ESL learners, beach bag drives, et cetera. I see the constant theme coming up. It's all about high expectations for all, student cultural teaching, differentiation, making sure that you recognize the assets and strengths that every single student and employee brings to the classroom, relevant teaching, inclusive environments, learning styles, all very good things we're doing out there. But other trainings that have popped up, and we've all seen examples in the classroom, from stu from students' parents, from teachers, from other administrators, different languages used. There's a shaming in some. There's there's words such as institutional racism, systemic racism, supremacy, white privilege. And I think that now, after looking at these two, even though there's overlap, I think they are different. And I want to make sure that we're clear of what we are promoting and what we are expecting of our employees and of our of our administrators and of our teachers. Um, I don't need to bring the examples up now, but there are examples where I do believe that in some cases, we have crossed that line and we are teaching things or things are getting out there that we say we don't do. So this resolution was to clarify that. Um, I know that Virginia Beach City Public Schools needs to be totally transparent when it comes to equity training and education. The lack of this clarity and differentiation is counterproductive. And I think this re resolution does this. Simply, this resolution provides much-needed and critical guidance for all School Board members, administrators, teachers, and our community. It brings clarity to what we here at BBCPS expect in our training and teaching. And it it clarifies and affirms what we've been saying now for almost a year. So I sent this out in advance. I um Jennifer and I worked a lot on this. We read a lot of books. We talked to to a lot of people. We went back and looked at email after email and after email. And our our position is we just want to make sure that we know what we're we're sending out there, that our administrators and teachers know, and that everybody is clear of expectations. Um, I hope that we have good dialogue and discussion tonight. If we're not ready for that, I hope that you will email me um and and tell me which one of these you don't agree with, or if you don't agree with any of it, and try to tweak it because we really want a resolution that will bring clarity and that can get wide support. And so thank you, and thank you, Ms. Franklin, for helping me with this.
So go ahead, Ms. Franklin, please.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Weems, for allowing me to have some input on this as well. And I just want to clarify my position um in that I do not believe that we as a division um do anything but support culturally responsive practices. I personally feel like we do a great job with our equity program. And I attended the equity um study and and I thought it was lovely and I do think that we're doing a great job here. One of the things that I was thinking about, though, when when Ms. Weems and I were discussing this topic is that the only example I can think of, and I I and thank you to um all the board members that have already spoken to this about it. Um, the only example that I can think of is, you know, recently, unfortunately, I I got a red light ticket. You know, I wasn't meaning to run a red light. Um, I personally thought that I had come to a stop, but clearly, when I watched the video, I did not come to a complete stop. I wasn't trying to be a bad citizen. It was just simply that I did not recognize that my behavior um was not necessarily what the law expects as well. And so really, when I was thinking about this, it's kind of like that. I don't believe that the situations that have occurred um that have been brought to our attention are necessarily uh um an intentional or, you know, um, an act that they're trying to be disobedient or, you know, um controversial. I truly believe that in in these situations, a lot of these people truly felt that that was um their feeling about something, that they were passionate about something. I don't think that this was uh something that was meant to cause uh an upheaval of our equity policy that we have in place currently. Um, what I do think, though, and I agree with Ms. Weems in that we were hoping to create something that was positive, that would provide a framework. Um, and that's why we were very careful in our wording to, uh, you know, to help people understand that this really is just meant to provide, like she said, clarity in what we do believe and affirm as opposed to any type of confusion about what might not be um appropriate within VP CPS um boundaries, you know, within our within our division. And so I thought it was very important, just because I do believe that there is a lot of confusion in the community about what is happening within VP CPS, which I think there are a lot of amazing things happening here, by the way. And um and I just wanted to create, you know, the the a really sound resolution to help people understand that we believe in equity training. We believe in culturally responsive training and uh practice training and um but, you know, there is, there is a line where, because again, it can get blurred. There is a line that we feel that's just not appropriate for what is happening in the division. So I think it's really, again, just a framework and it was certainly not meant to um, you know, cause any further frustration or or controversy. It was just really meant to be a positive tool to allow us to have that framework and that clarity and um that line where we say, you know, this is, this is what we what we affirm and this is what we don't affirm. So I thank you for your time and and I I I just ask that I know that this is a very um sensitive issue and I just ask that you keep an open mind about this in terms of the intent and uh and what we're trying to accomplish with this. So thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Melnick, and then Mrs. Riggs.
I I think that Mrs. Weems had a a great suggestion, which was um that we email her and that we talk about this at the next meeting. Um, I struggle with a resolution that kind of spells out what what we should not be doing because I believe that opens us up for interpretation by each individual. I am s I'm very proud of our equity policy and I kind of mold this over and I think um it it was what Mrs. Ryan and I were trying to avoid for tonight, which was um as Mrs. Weems stated when she started speaking, um you you offered to apply context. And that's what we wanted to happen tonight, was the addition of Mrs. Weems' resolution at the School Board meeting, the night of the School Board meeting, so that she could apply context to this so that it was not just sent out to families who really couldn't understand. And I think that you did that tonight. And that's exactly what we wanted to happen tonight. What we didn't want to happen was to upset the public about something that we we didn't fully have a grasp. And I think that's fair. And now we have people outside rallying. We have a news reporter out there trying to get comments from us in the middle of a School Board meeting. We've had fighting going on. We've embarrassed ourselves on on television, all because we we just needed some clarity and some direction with your resolution. Um, I have a resolution here that I'm not going to pass out. I I've shared it with Kami. I've shared it with the chair and my resolution is in response to yours, but actually written as a resolution that promotes what we do and not what we don't do. I don't think this deserves a resolution. I think we have an equity policy. I think we have processes in place to deal with um situations that arise, but I will send my resolution to Mrs. Weems um and hope that we can move forward in two weeks when we meet um and this is an action item. I mean, we could debate this all night. It's it's um well, I don't I don't know what it is, but it's disappointing to me and um I I I will send this as my answer to um your resolution and my response to your resolution.
Mrs. Riggs.
First of all, I want to thank you for your context and explaining. I think it was very well done. Um, and uh I appreciate that. I I think from what we heard and were explained why it wasn't put on uh the agenda is our to vote on tonight and that this would happen, this, we needed to discuss it. So and I think that that's very important. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, um, as far as the resolution discussing, you know, equity, and I I don't see where it's trying to replace the equity policy. I don't see that either. Um, but I I think before we start placing resolutions about equity and all of that, we have spent a lot of money on the um equity, um what do we call it? Yeah, assessment. And so that assessment is going to be presented to us at our workshop in July, the first, sixth and seventh of July.
Actually, the timeline was extended a little bit, more like late summer.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll we'll um plan on bringing it. We got governance committee meeting next week, but we plan on bringing it to the retreat. I think we'll have.
Right, so it's going to be brought to us at the retreat then, so and I just think for, I think we're jumping the gun. Um, and I think we need to, I'm not saying rule it out completely. Whether it be yours, Ms. Melnick, or yours, and may, you know, may maybe we will. Maybe that might even be a recommendation. Who knows? I I don't know. But I think that we are jumping the gun. I think that we really need to at least finish that assessment and it be presented to us before we do that. So that's that's what I wanted to add. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes. And then Mrs. Manning.
One of the things I agree with is I think there's been a lot of jumping the gun. Um, I was under the impression that an assessment would come first and we haven't had that and apparently that's been extended. But, you know, we already have things in motion prior to an assessment. And assessments should be, you know, its purpose is to let you know what you need. So there's that. But then things are coming out that are in CRT territory, such as the book study, which according to emails is happening to at more than one school. And so the public's already upset and you know, stating that we have an equity policy and that we're going to have an assessment and we're going to see how we can support students more. However, we're going to make sure it doesn't slide over into this CRT world that already has the public upset. We've heard numerous times, we don't teach CRT. We're not going to teach CRT. I don't see anything wrong with codifying it. If you're if you're saying it, if you're making that claim, I I just don't understand what the problem is with actually codifying it. You know, this is, this is very confusing and when Ms. Weems' um resolution was out there and it was just simply discussing that CRT is not part of the equity policy. The we started getting a few letters today in support of, well, actually, in support of the equi equity policy but against the resolution. That led me to believe that the people who wrote in that had a problem with that are in favor of CRT because that was the only thing that was saying, this is not a part of this. It just differentiated it. And if the public is already upset about this one little piece And if the public is already upset about this one little piece that it looks like it includes, then, and you're saying that it's not included, what is wrong with writing down that it's not included? I just, I just don't understand that at all.
Mrs. Manning.
Thank you, and, you know, I, I still believe very strongly that we can't set a precedent where we don't want the public to see something because they might not understand it. Um, I think this resolution was written in a manner that's very clear um and uses language that is very easy to understand. You know, I remember back when culturally responsive practices was brought to, to us on the board. I guess, you know, my earliest memory is when Dr. Cashwell and Dr. Hughes um was presenting it to us in a workshop, and I didn't fully understand what it was. Um, but I come to learn um that it was making sure that diverse viewpoints are heard and, and understood in our school system. Um, diverse viewpoints from not only race, but um background, what, what country you came from, if you weren't born here in America, um if you have a special need, if you're gifted, if, you know, many different things. And that we understand our students and get to know them, and I think that's something that our teachers do a really good job of doing. Um, that we're teaching all history, including dark spots in history of our country and of this world. Um, and, and I support that. I support that as culturally responsive practices, and I have supported that since I remember it being introduced to me by Dr. Cashwell. And, but that's not what I'm seeing now. And teachers aren't reaching out to those, to, to other members of the board. Um, they're reaching out to me, and they're, and they're telling me things that they won't tell their board members. Um, I've spoken to a number of teachers who've participated in recent trainings in our division who are very upset. They want to quit their jobs, and they want clarity around what is going on. You know, in our equity, when we had this conversation about the equity policy back in September, it was yeah, we're going to do this assessment, and we're going to evaluate what training we're going to do, and then we're going to bring it to the board and let you know. But yet, we're already hearing some of that training's already happening, and I don't understand why. And you know, I, one story that really sticks out to me is a parent called me and told me this story, and I think that subsequently, this, this parent may have emailed the full board. But it was her elementary school child, I, I think it was first or second grade. And she said, my daughter just came home, and she said, mommy, I have white skin, but I'm not mean. And the mother was so upset, and I was so upset when the mother told me the mother doesn't know what she was being taught at school. But it was shortly after the equity policy was approved. And um that's why I feel very passionately that we need to define what we are not doing. Um, because it's, the, the five-page equity policy apparently has not defined that to um our employees, because I, I continue to hear story after story after story. And I have read the racial healing handbook, and I, and I challenge every one of you to read it. Um, and, and I was just, it, it offended me in so many different ways, my Christian faith, my, um, my culture. And, and teachers who participated in it have reached out to me. Um, and they won't, they won't go on record, they're not going to come in here and speak, they're not going to send the board an email. And so I would just like to ask you to consider that, consider the, consider perspectives of people who've been put through this, who didn't want to. And, and just keep an open mind about this. And if you have, you know, specific issues, you know, rather than saying, I don't support this resolution, you know, maybe give some reasons why that maybe there's a certain item on here that you, you don't agree with. Um, and, and maybe it can be explained a little bit better. Thank you.
So I, I I want to respond to the, the goal or the, the mission here. And I'm, I'm just still not clear that this resolution would accomplish what the, what the goal is. And it gets back to the issues, and for whatever the reason, because what seems to come to the school board are of a more generic issue. They, they don't give specific examples, and I'm, I'm here to, I, I do, I'm not denying that there are not examples. But we're getting away, again, that the, because these these, these parameters and expectations are already in place, and there's a departmental website that makes clear what that we don't, that, you know, it's not a sanctioned part of the curriculum, that we're getting away from result, resolving these issues at the school level. And, and whether it's equity-related or, or any other subject matter, if, if teachers are, you know, exercising some lapse in judgment or not, or just, you know, the parent needs more clarification. Again, when it's teachers and they're not speaking to coaches running the training, or at the classroom level, and we, we, we have gotten very few as a school board, specific parent examples that we can direct, you know, to say, well, you know, have you tried to resolve this at the school level? Um, and that's frustrating for me, because part of this, this part of the narrative seems to be borrowed from a national playbook. And I, I'm the first to want to take responsibility for guiding constituents to how to get these issues resolved. But so be, again, the parameters are already in place. We have this equity assessment in the works where this can be a broader discussion. And I, I still have to wonder, and I still feel, when, when somebody sees, or when I see a list of eight things we, we shouldn't do, it implies to me, if I'm an av- a citizen out there, well, then these are, that this is already sanctioned. Why, why else would they come up, why else would we want to come up with a list to not do it? Because it implies we're doing it, and that's why we need to have a list to say, you're not, you shouldn't do it. So that's why I struggle with this list. I mean, I don't think any of us sitting here can really argue with any of this, but it's just not standard to develop a resolution to affirm what we're not doing. Um, and, and so that's just honestly where, where, where I'm not, I'm at now. I think we all have the same ultimate goal in mind of, of continuing to support the equity efforts in the division and making it inclusive and welcoming. That's, that's stated right up front in our equity policy. I'll, I'll leave it at that right now.
Yes, Mrs. Weems.
Yes, I'll respectfully disagree that the website makes it clear. The website defines, and I think, two sentences, what critical race theory is, and the whole problem. That's why I didn't use critical race theory through all these except for G, because some people define CRT so narrowly, and some other want to encompass everything that they don't agree with, with CRT. And so that, to me, does not make it clear, and we had that conversation with Ms. Ryan. So, you know, I would be happy to see that the website was a little clearer, but, but, but it does, it does not make it clear when all it says again is we don't do CRT. This is CRT, we don't do it, because then we get instances where you know, things come up, of course, you know, admit you're racist, that racial hea- healing bug, becoming anti-racist zone document. I mean, documents about bias and privilege, and, you know, rejecting colorblindness, and so all that stuff for the regular person is in one category, and other stuff that we do is in another category. Do they overlap? Do they not? Are they different? So this was just to clarify again with the positives, and actually, Ms. Franklin and I did come up with two or three different ones, and one had it all, kind of like you were saying, what we do, what we do, what we do, and then we thought, well, that really doesn't make it any more clearer, so then we kind of divide it in half, but I'll go back and get that, get, get that number two resolution or number three resolution and and look at it. But um but I think the language here is very simple, like you can't really misinterpret, like F, that capitalism is racist. You can't really misinterpret that. That's just like really layman's language.
But I guess my point is if we're not teaching that it is, why do we need, why, why make a comment like that?
Well, because in some cases, it has been brought to our attention that things like that have been said, and you know, and I found, and, and again, if we, and again, if and, and Dr. Spence has said this, you are saying this, give, give examples, give specifics, well, and if I'm going to be in charge of policing teachers, which, you know, I'm not in every classroom, I want to make sure that I know when the teacher knows what they're, they're expecting, because if we would have had some sort of document like this, perhaps the whole misinformation and the whole chaos of that one book study that we just are still going through and hearing about could have been avoided, because maybe the administrator would look at this and like, oh, you know, maybe that's something that, that my, my teachers can do on their own time. You know, so this is really just to clarify, but, you know, Ms. Franklin and I will be glad to go back and take your input, and we'll look at our other resolution, because we talked about that at length, Ms. Franklin, which one to put, and we thought this one actually was more clear. Because we want to make sure that our teachers and our administrators know, and with the equity assessment, this is just completely independent of the equity, equity assessment. I don't know what the equity assessment is going to come back with, but I will hope that we can all agree, like you said, Ms. Ryan, you, or somebody, you're not sure that many of us could disagree with A, B, C, D, E, F, G. I'm sure some of us will disagree with some, but that, that is independent of the equity assessment, in my opinion. That has not, that doesn't have anything to do with this, because this is not a replacement to the equity policy, or whatever comes out with the equity assessment.
And, and also, Ms. Ryan, I do understand where you're coming from.
Okay, yes, we have Mrs. Melnick, then Mrs. Franklin, okay.
So exactly that is, is part of the problem. So most people didn't have a problem with the book study. And we heard from the teachers, fourteen of the teachers, maybe somebody did have a problem with that group. That's okay. It's okay. It's okay to be uncomfortable. It's okay to not like that. She didn't have, she doesn't. But most of those teachers loved that book study, and it was interpreted by some to be horrible, but by many to be necessary. And one line from that teacher, from that teacher's email to us, I thought was really important, important enough that I wrote it down, that she resent that email today, and she reminded us this. A line about having conversations is being misconstrued to say that we as teachers are having conversations about CRT to our students. We are not discussing CRT or its ideas to our students. Our students bring up conversations about current events, and when they ask us about them, we need to be able to address them with sensitivity and care. And I think that's the bottom line. And so we, some, some people are being misled. The public has been I don't even know what to say. It's just like so alarming to so many of us, and that as a board, that there are members that, that go out and, and instead of doing what we're supposed to do as a board member, and calling Dr. Spence, setting up an appointment with Dr. Spence that says, I'm so angry, can you help me understand this? I don't understand this book that they're doing. And then allow conversation to ensue and get some clarity on it. But, but to do this to our teachers who, who want to do this work, most of them want, want this, they need this, they see the need and the value in this. And to do what we've done, not we, what some have done to some of our teachers, that's why they want to leave this profession. That's why, because we have a board that takes their names and their email addresses and puts it out there for people to then in turn be cruel to these teachers, and I, I, this is the hill I'm willing to die on. But it's also, this, I this type of, this is not going to be the legacy I leave behind. I am not going to be that person that says, yeah, I was part of that board that um had to, had to define equity to, to the to every minute detail and, and that I held anti-equity rallies out in front of the school administration building um with other elected officials, or that I made videos and, and, and pronounced my um disdain for this. That's not the legacy I'm going to leave. And um I just ask that, you know, we come prepared to talk at the next board meeting, and I will send out my resolution, and I, it doesn't matter to me what, what you do with it, but this is the hill I'm willing to die on.
Mrs. Anderson.
I think what bothers me about this resolution is that, to me, it's sort of accusing us of allowing CRT, or comes across that way to me. Um, the public has been incited by, by false narratives. Yes, we've had a lot of emails about this, because they've been incited by these false narratives that, that say we're teaching critical race theory, and, and that's the problem, is that, you know, they're, they're being told that, and and, and you know, you know, I, I realize that those teachers did a book study. But, but a book study done by professionals who have a discussion about the book doesn't mean that those professionals have to, have to agree with what the book states. The whole idea of having a book study is to have conversations. It, and it was part of their professional development. It's my understanding that this was voluntary. They didn't, they weren't told they had to do it. It was, it was a book that, that, that was the title was given to them, but they weren't told that they had to do this. They chose to be in that group study group. And, and if they disagree with the narrative of the book, that they can express that through professional conversations. That's the whole purpose of having a book study. The big study that everyone is, is upset about was, was voluntary completely. And my, even one of my colleagues tonight even said that she chose, she chose to read the book. Why? Because she wanted to know what it was about, as her professional development. I, I, I commend you for saying that you read it, Mrs. Manning, so that so that you would know what it's all about, and you said you were offended. Okay, that's your professional opinion about it. Uh, and that's why we do things like that. But if you were in a book study with other professionals who would have a conversation with you about it, you could talk about the things you disagree with, or the things that you agree with. Maybe there was nothing in the book that you agreed with. That's possible also, but, you know, speaking about that and talking about that in a book study is what it's all about, and that was part of their professional development. And so what Ms. Melnick just said about, you know, what the teachers, they want to be able to help these students when they talk about current events. Things are happening. You can't ignore what's happening to the public right now. And so these kids have to have professionals who know how to handle this, this type of conversation. And um, you know, I, I, I believe we need to give our, our equity study time, and the cer- the survey that's happening. We need to give them time to develop and come back with narratives that, that help us and help, help our teachers and give them professional development, and help them to be able to talk to students, and help them understand how to deal with what's happening in our world today. And this whole idea that, oh, they're teaching CRT, they're doing that, it's not happening. They're not on purpose teaching it, but I do believe that teachers need to be exposed to what it's all about so that they know how to handle this with students when they have questions about what's happening in our world today.
Mrs. Franklin, and then Mrs. Hughes.
Well, I just want to say, Ms. Ryan, I, I can understand your position on how this might appear, that we're saying we don't do this, because maybe we are doing this now, and I, that was not the intention of the resolution. Um, and I do also agree that part of CRP is making sure that we have um teachers who are sensitive to the needs of all students and understand where they might be lacking in some of those, those areas. I think also, though, that we should have in the Virginia Beach School list of, of approved books on equity, because otherwise that really does open, I mean, look at these two unique situations that have popped up, that have caused so much controversy. You know, the administration has come back and said that they would not necessarily have approved those things, uh, those um videos, books, whatever the case may be, um, from occurring, and I feel like it does put um, if, if we're, if, if teachers on school time with school money with school money are just allowed to take it upon themselves to decide whatever is gonna take place, that, I, I personally feel like that puts undue, um, uh, responsibility on us and the administration to have to constantly defend those actions, and, and, or, and/or, um, uh, you know, discuss that, and, you know, and, and have a situation where then we have to have some recourse with those particular groups of teachers. And I think that that's the only reason why I do feel like we've gotta have a framework of, of what is okay. You know, it's not okay to read every single book on CRT during school time with school money. I, I don't personally agree that that is a smart way to allow, um, personnel to, to have the freedom to do that. I, I mean, there's gotta be some guidelines around what is acceptable.
So if I may, this might be a good time to turn to Dr. Spence, 'cause I believe there was a reference in one of his email replies. Can you elaborate for us on what the present division protocol is, w- with regard to reviewing of such materials? This might be a good point.
Well, we, we have, um, we've clarified and, and had this conversation with our principals, um, that if they're going to engage in conversations around equity, that that needs to be reviewed up through docile and through, um, the Office for DEI, so that we can have eyes on that, and to make sure that we understand what we're talking about, right? And so, I certainly think that, um, message has gone out to our principals.
So I mean, I, since you mentioned in a framework, it, and so this framework has been clearly communicate, I mean, it seems like there is a framework, and it's a matter of how, well, you know, it's been communicated and, or recommunicated, and Dr. Robertson is nodding.
And we do have that list of resources that, um, Ms. Franklin talked about, that's available on the DEI website. And there was, um, you know, information about that shared with our principals as well, so, you know, um, I don't know. I have so many thoughts about this conversation, but to your specific question, that's my answer.
Yeah, and, and actually, I do wanna thank you, Dr. Spence, because you have been very, um, you know, open to communicate with me about some of these issues, and just, you know, just be willing to discuss it with Ms. Williams and I at length, and I do appreciate your openness and candor about this. Um, and, you know, I certainly do want to have your input and the administration's input as well. This is, you know, this was just something, um, that we wanted to present in a way that we could start having some, some real conversation and solution about, because I'm sure that all of you, um, get just as frustrated with all of the, the, you know, the com- the, the continued conversation, um, when we want to defend what we're doing here um, within the division. I, I do think that we have very good things happening here. And so it just makes it harder to defend that, when we have these little, you know, things pop up, these situations pop up, and then there, it just gives fodder for, um, the op- the, the opposite opinion, um, and having to constantly defend that, so. So I, again, I just wanna reiterate that this was meant to be a positive tool, um, in order to provide that clarity and framework, but, you know, uh, Ms. Williams and I are completely open to discussion on, you know, um, you know, where we take this from here. I believe, right, that, Ms. Williams?
And Mrs. Hughes, and then Mrs. Manning.
Yes, I think that we could probably all agree that the intent of professional development is so that teachers take what they learn into the classroom. And if book studies like this are part of professional development, that's a problem. Now, I did reach out to Dr. Spence. I did not ask to meet him in person, but we did email back and forth. And I showed him a thread that you certainly could intuit that this was not optional. In fact, there was one section where the principal sent out an email, yeah, saying there was a trigger warning. This chapter, this particular part of the study would be optional. There would be no reason to do that unless it had been conveyed before that it was not optional. You, you don't have to tell people this part's optional if it's already optional. That's problematic. As far as having a resolution that states what we don't do, we had a parent, I don't know how, how many this one stood out to, but she was not happy with the wording of the Virtual Virginia readiness. And as I read through it, one of the things it did was it, it, there were parameters. You know, you need to be un- you need to be comfortable with, you know, not having as much interaction with students. It had parameters, what it does not include. And I believe that this resolution does that. It has, it has some definition as to what it does not include. It allows parameters. Um, additionally, as far as this, this book study, which seems to be one of the most egregious um, pieces of evidence of CRT going on, with or without it being sanctioned. Um, and certainly this, um, resolution would clearly state that something like this is not sanctioned, is, I don't know how many people here have actually read the book from cover to cover. I know Ms. Manning has. I don't know how many other people have. But one of the things that I, and anybody else who deals with children should've found horrifying in there, is that they discussed adultism, where people that are perceived as younger should have autonomy over their own bodies. I don't think we should be, children and adults are not peers, but there's a reason that children don't have autonomy over their own bodies. That's kind of grooming language to me. That, to me, was really horrifying, and should not be part of professional development. Um, and one of the things I did ask, because Dr. Spence told me that the study had been paused and books had been collected, I actually asked if the books could be distributed to us at this meeting, have an opportunity to go over them for a couple weeks and bring them back at the next meeting. Um, that I didn't get a response to, so I don't know, but I mean, I don't know if that's something that's possible to do.
Well, they, they were collected at the school level. I mean, I don't, they don't, they're not at the division, but I'm certain we can get copies of the book if you all would like to have a copy to read. If you'll just let Regina know, we'll work that out.
Mrs. Manning.
So let me just clarify, I didn't read the book for professional development. I read it because a teacher contacted me and was concerned about what she felt that she had to read. And I wanted to understand what was in it, what is being used in our division, just like we review our textbooks. I wanted to know what was in it. And, you know, some of the things that stood out to me was that they talked about religious identity and privilege. And people can act religious privileged when they assume those under the atheist umbrella are wrong or misguided, and it talks about how you should work to reduce your religious privilege. And to me, as a, a person of Christian faith, it was telling me that I need to not be as Christian, that I, I shouldn't, you know, I shouldn't have my own beliefs and believe that I'm right and the other person is wrong, which completely goes against my religious faith. And, 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 and I'm, and I'm, I'm applying this as I'm reading it to, okay, this is, teachers are sitting in here, having to read this book, and I say having, because the teachers I spoke to felt that they had to. And the emails that I have seen indicated that they really were not given an option to not do it. Um, the adultism, as, as Ms. Hughes mentioned, it talks about, um, the amount of melanin that is in your skin, signals something to the world, and, and white supremacy, and thi- this whole book is critical race theory. And so for anybody to sit around here and say that critical race theory is not in our schools is just wrong. It is. And the book study has not been canceled. It has been put on pause. Um, and, and it's not just this book study. It's not just the literacy leader meeting that took place. I have example after example after example after example, and I am happy to share every example with every board member. Um, but i- it is imperative that we define what we don't do. And if board members believe that we should be doing the things in, in this resolution, then, then let us know. You know? Speak up and say why. Because I think the community deserves to know what their tax dollars are paying for, because tax dollars did pay for this racial healing handbook. That is critical race theory. And this is not misinformation. All of the information that I've been telling the public, I backed up with documents. And I've got documents that I haven't shared with the board. But I'm happy to. Reach out to me. I'll share anything and everything that I have. But please stop saying that I'm spreading misinformation. I'm not spreading misinformation. I'm giving examples of what is happening. And that is happening, happened to students that I know quite well. Examples. So, so please stop with the tagline of misinformation.
Okay, to Ms. Williams?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Owens, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, and I'll try and be brief, uh, because I know we're gonna be back on the agenda with this again, uh, next meeting. Um, to start, I, I'm not in favor of uh, this resolution, nor am I looking for a resolution to clarify equity training. Definitely not prior to having our sit-down and having the assessment, but I, maybe something comes out of the assessment where it, uh, where I'm convinced that it's more necessary at that point than I would be supportive of it, um, but at this point, I'm not. Um, I purchased the book when, uh, I heard that it was so controversial, and I was expecting to see incredibly controversial, super-left-wing, I don't know. That's not what I saw when I read it, and I think it's okay, as Ms. Anderson said, for people to have different viewpoints, and have different things that they feel offended about, uh, different things that they feel uncomfortable about. Uh, I don't think any time in the history of progress, ever, in any society has progress moved forward without people feeling uncomfortable and offended, and talking through those things, and finding common ground, and moving forward. Uh, beyond here, on the resolution, uh, insinuates, or says outright, that implicit bias does not exist. Uh, yeah, I have a problem with that. I would, I don't wanna be lumped in with, I think we can all agree with all of the A, B, C, D, E, F, G, 'cause I do believe implicit bias exists. Maybe I'm the only one here who believes implicit bias is a thing, and when we look at our student disciplinary records that show that we have disparities, if it's not implicit bias that we're seeing, then I guess it's explicit racism. So we need to look and address which one it is, and maybe it's a little bit of both. It's okay to look at where we're at and talk about things, and start to work on improving them. Uh, our teachers are professionals. They are college graduate professionals in academia. I trust that they are able to have conversations that explore their different experiences and different thoughts and beliefs, and how they can improve their interactions with their students and with each other by hearing how other people's experiences have been in the world, or been within the school. Uh, the idea that we are pushing forward, uh, training now without doing the assessment, I, I'm not sure I fully understand if the board didn't think that we had diversity training at all prior to the equity policy. That we, we have always had trainings within, not always, but trainings are not new. Diversity and equity trainings have been in the, the compass, and the plans, and navigation, and all of that. That's not new to the equity policy. I, you know, the, the idea that we're upset that the books or the discussions are talking about rejecting colorblindness. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with rejecting colorblindness. I'm fine with us looking and seeing people as their whole entire person, and recognizing that. If we are colorblind, then we don't know who's missing, because we can't see who's missing at the table. Yeah, we need to be able to, to see each other for our totality. We can't have diversity if we can't see who's there or not, 'cause then we think we have a diverse situation. I, I, I will just go ahead and, and wrap up and say, um, yeah, it's gonna be some uncomfortable conversations, and I'm okay with, uh, having those addressed on a case-by-case basis, the way our district has always addressed those situations. Uh, there has been years and years of uncomfortable, uh, situations, and comments, and assignments, uh, where people have been offended for years within our district. We have received emails about, uh, underground railroad activity that was completely inappropriate, about things going on in classrooms that were inappropriate. We need to be able to address that with training, with discussions. Nobody jumped up on the board to put a resolution when people were uncomfortable because their children were experiencing those things then. Uh, you know, I, I, I certainly have empathy for any parent who has to hear their child say, "Mommy, my skin is a certain color, and I don't want people to think something about me because of that." I've lived it. That is every minority parent's life. I, I have a first grader, they talk, they start talking about those topics of history, of Martin Luther King, and just basic general history, and yes, that's a a conversation for first graders. It came up. Yes, "I'm brown, but people can't own me." You're right. The answer to the little girl is, "You're absolutely right. Your skin is white, and it does not mean you're mean." And somebody else's skin can be a different color, and it does not mean something about them. Yeah, that's, that's developmentally appropriate conversation that comes back when a seven-year-old has discussions that include civil rights. Uh, so I, I'm gonna go ahead and, and leave it. We can discuss it more next meeting. We can discuss it however much we wanna discuss it. I'm not in favor of this, thanks.
And Mrs. Williams?
Um, yes, and of course, this is, this resolution has nothing about it to avoid uncomfortable conversations. I mean, we do that every day. We do it every other Tuesday night. We do it at work. We do it at home, you know, so that, I, I don't really know how you can get that out of this resolution. But a- and professional development, I mean, the hard part comes is when, when teachers feel like they are forced to do something that they don't agree with, and they have no voice, because they, and again, their, their perception is that they can't say anything. I've heard it over and over and over again, and I know perceptions, you can't go by perception, Carolyn, but we can't tell a teacher how they should or should not feel. And if a teacher is being required to do something, whether it's mandatory, or like I gave an example, um, you know, I was a tennis coach, and if I was the tennis coach, and I said, "Girls, you know, practice is over at five, you can stay for extra practice, but you don't have to, but you can assuredly stay, and I make the lineup tomorrow, and for all those people who stay for extra practice, you know, that's gonna be, I'm gonna remember that." You know, so, you know, mandatory versus optional, some teachers have, have the perception that, that they did have to go through certain trainings, and they, and they didn't agree with. But, you know, the bottom line is, I appreciate the dialogue. I appreciate the conversation, um, and if anybody has any um, tweaks, um, or any of these that they don't agree with, I, I would like to know, you know, like, A, if you don't agree with the, you know, why, and, and the reasons, because I, I, I think that would be really helpful for me. So I, I look forward to any feedback that, that anybody has. But I do think that, um, to say that we have an equity policy and an assessment, so everybody understands everything, is, is, is a false assumption. I think there's a lot of confusion. A, a lot of confusion. I mean, um, Ms. Anderson just said, said, I, I wrote it down, "They're not on purpose teaching it." You know, I mean, yeah, so that's the confusion. And so I just, you know, Ms. Franklin and others just wanted to clarify, and have some parameters, so that everybody's on the general page, so that we can defend, uh, again, if we don't do CRT, let's not do CRT, and let's have some parameters. And if we do, let's say it's a great thing, and, uh, we think it's great, and the direction that our school system wants to go, and we're gonna use part of it, you know? Uh, yeah, whatever, but, but, but let's, let's say, let's, let's say what it is, and be transparent, and, and, and be very truthful about it. be very truthful about it. But I'll look forward to some more discussion and, and hopefully y'all will call me or email me some, some bits and pieces. Thank you.
Well, that seems a good place to wrap things up. I was going to offer our superintendent any opportunity to, to add any more comments. Okay, is that you, Ms. Franklin, a final comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that, you know, this was meant to promote diversity because I agree, Jessica, with a lot of your comments, actually. And I, I want diversity. I think it's very important to bring everybody's individual experiences to the table and provide growth because I, I agree, we all have different experiences. We all have situations that we can all learn from. We are not trying to suppress that in any way. I just want you to know that. That is not what this is meant. The one thing that I would say though is, you know, you said that all of these people are educated and intelligent. I've, personally, I can tell you, I have met some very intelligent people that really do not understand social cues at all and are, and do say inappropriate things all the time. So I don't want to assume that just because someone is educated and intelligent that they do understand what is perhaps what we want to, what, what we want to display in the division. And, you know, in, in terms of B, I just, and I, I just want to say this because I do appreciate your feedback and I, and quite frankly, I always learn something from you every meeting. So I, I appreciate that. And, but I, I just wanted to say that any, any individual by virtue of his or her race or skin color is inherent, we're saying that we're not, we don't believe this, that any individual by virtue of his or her race or skin color is inherently racist, privileged or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. We're not saying that implicit bias does not exist. I, I agree that implicit bias does exist. However, what I'm just, I, I do want you to understand is we do think that you can't assume that somebody is going to be biased just because of their, their race or their history or their background. I think that's unfair to assume that somebody is automatically just because of how they look. And, and again, colleagues, I, I very much, I, I've enjoyed this feedback. I really have. And I think that, that it's, it's important. I've said that's one of the very early meetings that I was at. I think that in discussion is great, you know, and I really do want to make sure that we are collaborating in a, in a way that we all get to have, have a voice. And I know, again, this is a sensitive topic, but we have rules like we have with masks. We have to follow the governor's order on that. You know, there are guidelines that we have in place as a division. And this is really, again, just meant to be framework. We follow guidelines on other situations. This is really, again, just meant to be a framework, so thank you.
All right. With that, we will, and so the understanding is that this will be added as an action item next meeting, Mrs. Williams? Is that your request? Okay. All right, so committee organization or board reports. Colleagues? Mrs. Manning?
I have a few, I'll just brief you real quickly and then if you all have any specific questions, feel free to reach out to me. Modernization Committee had our annual meeting, just to let the public know that's comprised of two board members and two city council members. And we just meet annually to kind of look at our capital improvement program, where we are. Mr. Arnold gave a presentation to us kind of about, and the board has seen this presentation about kind of our history, where we are now and kind of where we're looking to be in the future. Had some good dialogue with city council on that. So if you have any additional questions, feel free to reach out to me. Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities had a meeting just a few days ago and the committee was briefed on accessibility of the, the new city hall that's being built. So that was very interesting. And then also had WHRO meeting and that, that one actually was fairly brief. They had a lot of kind of changing of leadership on WHRO. Dr. Cotton of Chesapeake stepped down as the chair and they elected some new folks there to their board as well. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Felton and then Mrs. Williams?
Appreciate this. In a continuing effort to promote a closer relationship between public education and those that represent our citizens in the General Assembly, the division extended an invitation to members of our legislative delegates to visit our schools. The purpose was to allow our elected officials to see how our reopening efforts have gone. On May 7th, Delegate Alice Askew and Senator Jen Kiggins visit Christopher Farms Elementary School. And on May 14th, Delegate Alice Askew and Nancy Guy, Delegate Nancy Guy, visit Ocean Lake High School. They were all thrilled to interact with students, teachers and staff alike. They all asked many great questions and they had nothing but positive things to say about their experience. And I think the biggest thrill of the day was when Senator Jen Kiggins and Delegate Alice Askew, we were invited outside by the elementary students to play golf. And they literally was telling us that, you know, you got a good, got a good swing, but you're not swinging hard enough. And they were having fun and they were unmasked. They were really having fun and doing great things outside. I want to thank Ms. Robin Backer of Christopher Farms and Dr. Claire LeBont of Ocean Lakes and all their staff for making a wonderful visit. Yesterday, May 24th, our legislative committee met. Committee members and staff had an enriching discussion about current and future legislative opportunities, potential issues for 2020, 2022 sessions and continue opportunities for legislative engagement. And I'd just like to say that my two colleagues, colleagues, Riggs and colleague Manning was attended this meeting as well. And it was a very fruitful conversation that we had with Joe Anders. And we are looking forward to doing some greater things with him when it comes to policy as well. I look forward to the discussions, continue the future of those discussion being brought forward to benefit our entire division. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, Mrs. Williams, excuse me.
Yes, thank you. I attended the SHAB, the School Health Advisory Board, and we had to say goodbye to our wonderful Mary Shaw via Zoom, unfortunately, and Heidi was there. And so that was Mary Shaw's last meeting, but she was so excited about the positivity rates. This was last week. She said, you know, they had hovered around eight and 10% for a long time and now they were in the fours. And I don't know, they're may, they may be even lower now. I don't know. But, okay, so threes, okay, so threes or fours. So that was excellent news. She reported about the vaccination clinics, two high schools a day. She said that not a significant number of students were getting vaccinated, about 100 at that time per school, but it was well worth it because the, the students that are getting vaccinated are those that probably wouldn't have been able to make it somewhere else or afford it or, or transportation and everything. So we all agreed that it was well, well worth it. And then also John Smith was there and he announced that the wellness policy triennial assessment is finally done and it's posted on VB School's website. He also talked about scratch cooking and I think they're going to do something at our retreat like they did a couple of years ago, scratch cooking. So that's awesome. And they want to add six schools this summer. Of course, COVID kind of paused that and that will make the total to 28 schools with scratch cooking. And he also said, how many meals that we served last year? Guess. Yes.
To students.
Oh, be quiet. I know, I know. Yes, of course, it was seven million, Dr. Spence. Dr. Spence guessed the exact number. Way to go, way to ruin it for everybody. Seven million meals.
Can't, can't even wrap our head around that.
They did an awesome job doing that. So it was a great meeting and our next meeting is to be determined. You know, we're not sure when it's going to be, but, but it will be with a new leader and, and we wish Mary Shaw the best retirement ever. She's done a great job during this very challenging year in her position, so we thank her for that.
Thank you. I, I echo that. I, I understand, Ms. Owens, and then Mrs. Riggs?
And mine are going to be really brief because my laptop died where my notes were. But Mental Health Task Force met yesterday for its kind of last meeting. We were narrowing down our recommendations and trying to prioritize them. So we're hoping to have those kind of reworded, sent back out to the group one more time for some independent review and hopefully be able to bring some recommendations back to the board this summer, hoping for our retreat. There was some discussion about the possibility of, of the group continuing to stay connected and to be able to touch base a couple of times throughout the year as perhaps a side counsel or something so that we can continue to review implementation and additional progress and just continue to share resources and be, be a continued force and resource for the, the division. So we will discuss and flesh that out further and hopefully be able to present more about that again with the retreat. Equity Council also met this month. Ms. Felton, if you know the date. The topic, well, we had a couple, but we talked about the new African-American history elective and the rollout for that and making sure that families and students are aware that it's available. We, I think we have our seniors in, senior representatives, and I believe that's actually in the Mental Health Task Force and on our Equity Council who are getting ready to graduate. And so we were very appreciative to them for their participation and really just helpful insight on the, the different topics that we've had. Those are the main topics that we covered without my notes.
All right, Mrs. Riggs, you're on.
Sister Cities, we have had a couple of meetings, but nothing to report, but now we do. We are going to do the breakfast that we've been having at the city club and town center. I think it's September the 16th. So I will be bringing further information, but I just wanted to kind of put it on y'all's radar and we will be asking all of you guys. And so we're excited about starting back and, and looking into having a new youth ambassador because our youth ambassador that was chosen two years ago is going to be going to college. So she will not be with us, but she still consider our youth ambassador until the new year, but just wanted to announce that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So quick governance updates, there, there will be, we have ongoing discussion, but there most certainly will be with next week's meeting, the, the impact of this, the governor order effective Friday to see what impact, if any, that would have on our present place, time and manner of meetings. Dr. Spence and I participated in a recording with Doug Edie, whose model was, we used for the, the development of our two new committees. And he asked us to, to focus on, on the governance committee specifically. So, so that recording we haven't seen yet. It was just, I think it was just a week ago, but we'll, we'll keep you posted on that. Tried to be as complete as, you know, it was hard. He, he was looking for spontaneity, so, but, you know, so to, to try and not leave things out when you're supposed to be spontaneous and not just reading from notes is, is a bit of a challenge, but, you know, tried to be as complete as possible with, with our experiences collectively as a board from, from the beginning of the, the committee, the, the challenges and, and the accomplishments and, and the work plan moving forward. Superintendent Evaluation, I drafted a, I said I would get you all a follow-up email to the, to Dr. Spence's actual self-evaluation and I have to, to resurrect that because I don't believe, I, I, I wound up sending it. I was going to run some language past the, my, the committee members first. There's just a slight tweak to our process, nothing, nothing too major. And I wanted to just be sure that they, that, that, that that's represented what, what we reached consensus on as a committee, but you will certainly get that from me by the end of the week. And just to be sure you all got into, in these, deviating just ever so slightly, but in terms of the tours going on presently, again, Plaza's tomorrow, the Brock email, if you didn't get it, let, let me know. That's June 9th. And also there will be a redo for Princess Anne Middle School. At least four of you asked for that and Mr. Freeman was kind enough to say that that would be arranged. So anybody else? Okay, then that concludes our formal meeting and we will now transition to hear our citizens and delegations on informal meeting and non-agenda items. So for the viewing public, just again, an announcement.